Bonjour mesdames, bonjour messieurs.
Bonne journée, mesdames et messieurs. Je suis Thierry Thomas, la directrice adjointe de l'agence médicale des appareils et de la pharmacie de l'ANSM, l'Agence Nationale pour la sécurité des médicaments et des produits de santé. Je suis ravie d'accueillir vous pour ce comité scientifique temporaire, dont le sujet est les ventilateurs respiratoires Philips qui ont été appelés en juin 2021 pour prendre stock des données disponibles et faire des recommandations. Avant de présenter ce comité et son agenda aujourd'hui, et pour présenter chacun des membres experts du comité, je vais présenter la parole à Mme Ratignier-Carbonet, directrice générale et directrice exécutif de l'ANSM. Bonne journée à tous. Bonne journée, mesdames et messieurs membres du comité scientifique. Merci Thierry pour cette introduction. En effet, je suis la Dr. Christelle Ratignier-Carbonet. Je suis la tête de l'Agence Nationale pour la Sécurité des Médicaments et des Produits de Santé. Nous sommes heureux d'accueillir vous tous pour participer à ce comité scientifique temporaire, TSC, qui est bien sûr de la plus grande importance par rapport aux ventilateurs respiratoires Philips qui ont été appelés en juin 2021. Ce comité scientifique temporaire est en ligne avec la politique de l'Agence Nationale pour la Sécurité des Médicaments, ANSM. Il est transmis en live sur notre chaîne YouTube pour ANSM, aussi disponible en anglais avec une traduction en live. Donc traduction en anglais et traduction en français pour les étrangers qui vont présenter. Pourquoi avons-nous ce comité scientifique temporaire aujourd'hui ? Le dévoiler par Philips, qu'ils allaient appeler, qu'ils avaient appelé leurs produits, était il y a presque un an, le 10 juin 2021. Ils ont appelé certains de leurs ventilateurs respiratoires respirants. Certains sont les ventilateurs à pression positive continue. Et il y a aussi d'autres types de ventilateurs. Ce recall était très large, il y a presque un an. Et il a prouvé qu'il y a un défaut, un défaut qualité sur certains de ces appareils avec le risque d'être exposé à ce que nous appelons des composés organiques volatiles, VOCs. Mais les experts sont ici aujourd'hui pour pouvoir discuter et avoir des échanges sur ces sujets parce que le fumier présent dans ces appareils pourrait potentiellement dégrader, ce qui pourrait représenter un risque. Comme je disais, la situation a commencé il y a un an. Nous avons eu de nombreuses réunions et échanges avec tous les parties prenantes, avec les patients, avec les professionnels de la santé, avec des prestataires de soins de santé à domicile et l'industrie en question. Tout le monde a été mobilisé afin que des mesures soient pris et que nous aurions des recommandations en termes de conduite pour garantir la sécurité des patients qui sont exposés à ces produits et bien sûr pour garantir que ces patients soient pris en charge et que leurs pathologies soient aussi pris en charge. Bien sûr, en particulier pour ceux qui continueront à utiliser ces appareils. C'est pourquoi j'ai décidé de créer ce comité scientifique temporaire où nous avons, comme je l'ai dit, de nombreux experts. Vous pouvez voir la composition de ce TSC. C'est aussi disponible sur le site web de l'ANSM. Nous voulions que ce TSC soit créé afin que nous puissions prendre stock de tous les données disponibles après un an, après cette information majeure qui a été suivie par ce recall et cette information majeure qui a été fournie par Philips. Nous voulions voir tous les données disponibles, y compris concernant les risques potentiels présentés par ces appareils qui ont été appelés en juin 2021 et pour donner une opinion, pour donner une notification de sécurité, pour partager ce que nous savons déjà, ce que nous devons mobiliser davantage en termes de données et de ressources et pour mettre à jour les recommandations que nous avons données dès qu'on a entendu parler de ce recall en juin 2021 avec tous les parties prenantes, les patients et les professionnels de la santé. Thierry Thomas a juste dit ça. La présentation des membres du TSC va se dérouler dans quelques minutes. C'est un comité multi-disciplinaire, pluriprofessional, avec des représentants des patients, avec des professionnels de la santé qui sont en charge de ces patients, avec des scientifiques, bien sûr, qui sont experts sur le sujet en main. Et vous avez vu cela dans notre agenda, qui est disponible sur notre site web aussi. Nous allons avoir des auditions. Nous allons entendre les présentations des différentes parties prenantes, comme je disais. Les patients, nous allons entendre la voix des patients, ce qui est bien sûr crucial parce qu'ils sont les principaux qui sont impactés par la situation. C'est important de entendre leur feedback. Nous allons aussi entendre des professionnels de la santé. Avec toutes les disciplines et avec toutes les sociétés apprenues qui seront avec nous. Nous allons aussi entendre parler de Philips, aussi de l'industrie afin que nous puissions aussi entendre tous les données qu'ils ont disponibles jusqu'à présent, ce qu'ils ont mobilisé en termes de ressources au cours de l'an passé. Nous allons aussi entendre les prestataires de soins de santé à domicile. Il y a bien sûr le lien entre les patients et l'industrie quand ils rendent ces appareils médicaux accessibles aux patients. Nous allons aussi entendre le feedback qu'ils ont eu des patients quand ils ont leurs échanges quotidiens avec eux. Comme je l'ai dit, la situation est paratnationale parce que ce recall a été annoncé en juin 2021 et il previent dans tous les pays où il est présent. La situation a une dimension internationale et c'est la raison pour laquelle nous allons entendre de l'FDA, l'administration Food and Drug Administration. Nous allons aussi entendre une présentation d'un chercheur suédois et d'un chercheur canadien qui ont fait des études. Donc c'est une situation internationale. C'est pourquoi, comme je disais, il y a un canal en anglais afin que tous nos contreparties, toute la communauté internationale puissent bénéficier de ce comité scientifique temporaire et afin qu'ils puissent avoir accès à tous les éléments qui seront partagés et entendre toutes les questions et les interactions qui vont se faire aujourd'hui entre les membres du comité scientifique temporaire. Ils seront aussi en mesure d'entendre les différentes auditions qui vont se faire. Je ne vais pas prendre plus longtemps. J'aimerais remercier tous les membres du comité scientifique qui ont accepté de participer à ce comité, qui est bien sûr très important afin que nous puissions prendre stock de tous les ressources que nous avons aujourd'hui, ce que nous devons mobiliser davantage et si nous pouvons faire des recommandations potentielles. Bien sûr, nous avons cette session de travail aujourd'hui. Nous devrons analyser précisément tous les éléments afin que nous puissions faire des recommandations, donner d'autres notifications de sécurité. Donc merci beaucoup à tous les membres du comité scientifique temporaire. J'aimerais aussi remercier Thierry Thomas pour la modération de ce CSG aujourd'hui et aujourd'hui et tout le temps que nous nous sommes rencontrés. J'aimerais aussi remercier le directeur des appareils médicaux et des appareils diagnostiques infini. Donc merci. Je vous souhaite une excellente session. Et je suis prête à entendre tout ce qui sera dit aujourd'hui. Je suis sûre que nous aurons d'autres échanges et je suis prête à regarder tout le travail qui a été fait. Merci beaucoup. Je donne la parole à Thierry pour la présentation des membres du CSG. Merci beaucoup tout le monde. Merci Christelle. Avant de vous présenter nos experts, avant de vous présenter vous, je voulais vous rappeler les objectifs de notre comité. Il devrait y avoir une diapositive, si vous pouvez l'enlever. Merci. Donc le premier objectif, comme la Mme Ratignier-Carbonet le disait, est de prendre stock de tous les données disponibles et du risque en utilisant les appareils Philips qui ont été appelés en juin 2021. Le risque est bien sûr l'un des principaux objectifs. L'essai de ce risque est l'un des principaux objectifs suivant le dévoiler initial que Philips a fait concernant le risque potentiel de cancer, parmi d'autres. Donc il était important de faire une petite mise à jour sur cela. Le deuxième objectif est de donner une notification de sécurité concernant le risque lié au usage de ces appareils et de recommander d'autres études si nécessaire. Et enfin, nous voulons évaluer si il est nécessaire de changer, ajuster les recommandations que l'ANSM avait données en juin et en juillet 2021 concernant le usage de ces appareils et le fait que les gens devraient continuer à les utiliser pendant que les patients attendaient une remplacement. Il y a neuf experts ici aujourd'hui avec des compétences spécifiques. Je vais vous laisser vous présenter. Peut-être que nous pouvons commencer avec monsieur Garnier, si vous ne vous préoccupez pas de commencer.
Je suis Robert Garnier. Je suis médecin et toxicologue. Je travaille depuis longtemps à l' centre anti-empoisonnement à Paris et j'ai participé à plusieurs assignments d'expertise dans différentes agences.
Mon nom est Olivia Lefebvre. Je suis toxicologue, professeur et pharmacien. Je suis en charge de l'analyse des exposures chez les patients. Mme Duflo, bonjour. Mon nom est Mme Duflo. Je suis la adjointe de l'hôpital de santé de l'association beatings cystic fibrosis.
Monsieur Montes. Oui, Thierry Montes. Bonne journée. Je suis une praticienne générale. J'ai aussi été entraînée à diagnostiquer l'asphalte.
Mme Diagubi, bonjour. Je suis Nadja Diagubi. Je suis professeure à l'université de Paris-Saclay pour la physique et la chimie. Et je suis la directrice d'un laboratoire qui évalue les appareils médicaux, en particulier en matière de compatibilité bio. Merci.
Mme Fournier. Bonne journée. Mon nom est Anniès Fournier. Je suis épidémiologiste à l'inserm, à l' centres de recherche sur l'épidémiologie et la santé des populations de Villejuie.
Monsieur Leroyet, bonjour. Mon nom est Christophe Leroyet. Je suis un spécialiste en bresse. Je suis aussi le président de la Fédération française de la pneumologie.
Monsieur Mazan. Mon nom est Diane Mazan. Je suis représentante de France Asso Santé. Nous avons 90 associations de patients et d'utilisateurs, y compris des gens qui utilisent les appareils en main. Et pendant environ un an, je peux dire que je suis devenue assez experte en anxiété et attaques de panique.
Merci, monsieur Yelisco Dupac. Bonne journée. Mon nom est Elise Yelisco Dupac. Je suis pharmacienne et je suis la correspondante régionale pour la vigilance des appareils médicaux de la région parisienne et je suis aussi la présidente de l'association nationale de coordonnées régionales des appareils médicaux. Merci beaucoup. Nous avons un panel avec différentes compétences : épidémiologistes, toxicologues, pneumologues, des gens qui sont experts en vigilance des appareils médicaux. Nous avons deux représentants des associations de patients dans notre college d'experts. Autour de la table, nous avons aussi des représentants des collaborateurs de l'ANSM. Ils seront en mesure d'intervenir et poser des questions pendant les auditions. Monsieur Sierdé.
Oui, bonjour Thierry Sierdé. Je suis directrice en charge des appareils médicaux et des appareils médicaux pour la diagnostique infini à l'ANSM. Et je suis la correspondante européenne pour ces fonctions. Mme Diepiera, bonjour. Rosemarie Diepiera. Je suis épidémiologiste et docteur. Je suis la directrice adjointe de l'EPIFARC, qui est un groupe d'intérêt scientifique entre l'ANSM et le CNAM, la sécurité sociale nationale.
Monsieur Didier Nato. Bonjour, monsieur Didier Nato. Je suis responsable du team insurance of medical devices for neurology, ophthalmology, ENT et anesthesia in case of infection. Avant de présenter aujourd'hui l'agenda, je voudrais vous dire un peu sur la déclaration publique d'intérêt. Donc tous les membres de ce comité ont rempli une forme de déclaration publique d'intérêt, un PDI, en ligne avec la réglementation en vigueur. Ils ont été étudiés en détail par les services de notre agence et suivant l'examen de ces PDIs n'a pas mis lumière à aucun élément qui serait lié au TSC d'aujourd'hui. Donc tous ces PDIs ont été vérifiés en détail et ont été publiés sur le site web de HealthPDI. Concernant l'agenda d'aujourd'hui, il y aura deux principales sessions sur l'agenda d'aujourd'hui. Tout d'abord, nous allons avoir une session publique jusqu'à 3 h. Donc il va y avoir surtout des auditions qui sont également en broadcast en live sur le canal de l'ANSM. Et à partir de 3h30, il y aura une session pour les experts seulement afin que nous puissions travailler sur les duties de ce TSC. Donc regardons l'agenda. Nous allons commencer avec une présentation sur le contexte français qui se concentre sur cette situation Philips depuis juin 2021. Nous aurons ensuite une présentation des données de vigilance des appareils médicaux qui ont été collectées par l'ANSM en ce qui concerne les appareils Philips qui ont été appelés. Puis nous allons entendre les ventilateurs Philips. Nous allons prendre une courte pause et puis nous aurons trois autres auditions de sociétés apprenues, trois différentes. Donc la SPLF, les associations numologie en français, la France Union des appareils de l'oreille, puis nous allons entendre l'administration Food and Drug Administration à la fin de ce soir. Donc l'autorité de santé aux États-Unis. Et puis pour terminer ces auditions, nous allons entendre deux chercheurs concernant une étude épidémiologique qui a été faite au Canada concernant ces appareils Philips spécifiques. Et puis nous allons entendre une étude suédoise qui est aussi liée à ces appareils. Donc je ne vous ai pas donné le nom des personnes que nous allons entendre ce soir. Nous les découvrons quand ils se présenteront ce soir. Les personnes que nous allons entendre, ils ont aussi signé une déclaration simplifiée d'intérêt qui a aussi été publiée hier, en même temps que nous avons publié l'agenda d'aujourd'hui. Avant de commencer ces présentations, je voulais remercier vous tous encore. Je remercie tous les experts, tous les participants, les personnes que nous allons entendre. Et je voudrais vous demander de rester concentrés sur le sujet d'aujourd'hui. Donc le risque potentiel lié au usage de ces appareils. Nous savons que la situation Philips est beaucoup plus vaste que cela, mais essayez de rester concentrés sur cela aujourd'hui. Donc maintenant nous pouvons commencer les présentations, à moins que vous ayez des questions ouvertes. Sinon, je vais maintenant donner la parole à monsieur Guider Nato qui va présenter le contexte autour de cette situation Philips. Merci Thierry. Donc nous souhaitons commencer ce TSC avec un rappel du contexte français. Le 10 juin 2021, l'ANSM a été informé par Philips qu'ils voulaient appeler certains ventilateurs globalement, avec et sans soutien de vie, ventilateurs CPAP, suivant un risque potentiel lié au fumier présent dans ces appareils médicaux. Deux types de risques ont été identifiés par le fabricant. Un risque d'exposition à deux VOCs, dimethyl dioxine et phenol-2,6-bis. Et un risque d'exposition à des particules venant de la dégradation du fumier. Philips a évalué que ces risques peuvent causer de graves dommages. Ils peuvent causer une irritation de la peau, des headaches et d'autres effets secondaires sur le foie et les reins, toxiques et potentiels effets carcinogéniques. Philips recommande d'aller en contact avec des GP ou des prestataires de soins de santé avant de changer quoi que ce soit dans le traitement prescrit aux patients. Philips recommande de stopper l'utilisation de ces appareils en vue de ces fabricants, mais ils considèrent que c'est important d'aller en contact avec des docteurs afin de choisir le bon comportement à adopter sur une base de cas par cas. Ces appareils sont utilisés à domicile. Ils servent aux patients qui ont besoin d'aide respiratoire pour dormir. Ça requiert une prescription médicale. Et ce sont les prestataires de soins de santé à domicile qui fournissent ces appareils. Nous avons environ 1,4 millions de personnes en France qui utilisent ces appareils CPAP de tous les fabricants. Et nous avons environ 80 000 patients qui utilisent cela à domicile. Nous avons environ 350 000 appareils CPAP en France et 29 500 ventilateurs en usage. Suite à la diffusion de cette information, l'ANSM a réagit très rapidement et a mis en place des méthodes d'information en échange avec les principaux parties prenantes. Donc tout d'abord les associations de patients, les représentants de sociétés apprenues, les conseillers nationaux professionnels, les prestataires de soins de santé à domicile. Depuis juin, sept réunions avec les parties prenantes ont eu lieu. Nous avons aussi eu des discussions avec les différentes autorités européennes et internationales afin de partager les résultats de nos investigations concernant la situation. En février 2022, nous avons décidé de commencer à suivre et aider la remplacement de ces appareils médicaux en France. Nous avons aussi publié quatre points d'information et des recommandations sur comment prendre soin de ces patients. Et nous avons organisé un webinaire pour répondre aux questions des patients. Bien sûr, depuis le début de la situation, nous suivons les actions prises par les fabricants et nous avons régulièrement des actualisations avec eux afin de savoir le progrès et les investigations que ils font. Nous avons fait des recommandations sur comment prendre soin des patients avec les sociétés apprenues. Ils ont tous déclaré que les patients devraient continuer à utiliser leur appareil. Ils étaient bien conscients que ce recall ne pouvait pas se produire rapidement. Donc pendant que les patients attendaient que l'appareil soit remplacé, il est recommandé de ne pas arrêter leur traitement. Aussi, en vue du risque s'ils arrêtaient leur traitement avec des appareils CPAP, ce qui est dans le court terme une réparation de la sommeillemente et un risque potentiel d'accident pour les professionnels de conduite ou des risques cardiovasculaires à long terme. Il y a aussi un augmentation de la pression artérielle. Nous avons demandé aux professionnels de la santé de informer les patients et de partager ces recommandations avec eux. La diapositive suivante, s'il vous plaît. Donc quelles sont les prochaines étapes ? Nous allons continuer nos échanges avec les parties prenantes. La prochaine réunion que nous allons avoir avec eux prendra lieu ce mois. Nous voulons avoir des discussions concernant les résultats préliminaires de ce TSC, potentiellement. Bien sûr, nous continuons le plan de remplacement mis en place par les fabricants et nous sommes aussi en train d'analyser la possibilité potentielle d'une étude épidémiologique basée sur les informations données par les prestataires de soins de santé à domicile. Merci beaucoup. Merci Pascal. Y a-t-il des remarques ou des questions ? Voulez-vous plus d'informations sur cette présentation ? Donc oui, il y a un haut risque d'accident. Et le fait que vous n'utilisez pas votre appareil médical pour des patients souffrant d'asphalte signifie qu'ils ne peuvent pas conduire. Il y a un haut risque d'accident, en effet. Et la personne doit être en leave sick. Ils ne peuvent pas conduire, en particulier s'ils sont un camion ou un bus.
Mme Fournier, oui, j'ai une question. Donc il y a 350 000 appareils qui ont été appelés en France, appareils CPAP. savons-nous combien de gens ont utilisé ces appareils au cours du passé ou plus récemment ?
350 000 appareils ont été appelés, mais très peu étaient en stock. Donc il y a presque 350 000 patients qui ont utilisé ces appareils. Cette figure devrait être légèrement plus basse. Nous avons mis en place une enquête de suivant ces figures. Dans quelques semaines, nous serons en mesure de vous donner plus d'informations sur le nombre de personnes, précisément. J'ai aussi une question. Nous parlons toujours des appareils qui ont été mis sur le marché entre 2015 et 2021. Donc cela ne signifie pas qu'avant 2015, il n'y avait pas de problèmes ou cela ne signifie pas que nous ne savons pas ce qui se passait avant. Ce recall est pour tous les appareils qui ont été mis sur le marché avant avril 2021. Dans les documents que nous avons envoyés, nous entendons toujours parler des appareils qui ont été mis en service entre 2015 et 2021. À mon avis, certains appareils ont été mis sur le marché avant 2015. Peut-être certains documents mentionnent des modèles qui ont été mis sur le marché après cela. Ok, j'ai une autre question. Combien de différents appareils ont il y a ? Quelles sont leurs similitudes et quelles sont leurs différences ? Parce que dans les fichiers que nous avons regardés, nous savons que nous avons des identifications d'appareils testés. Il y a trois modèles différents qui ont été testés. Mais sont-ce les trois modèles les seuls qui existent ? Et quelles sont les modèles représentatifs des tests ? représentent-ils ce qui est sur le marché ? Je pense que c'est une question que vous devez absolument demander à Philips quand nous aurons leur audition, en particulier concernant les tests qu'ils ont fait. C'est un point important, en effet, de savoir si les settings précédents étaient différents, si les modèles précédents étaient différents ou étaient les mêmes. Un autre point, nous parlerons de cela peut-être avec Philips plus tard, mais il serait intéressant de comprendre. Dans tous les documents que j'ai donnés, ai-je vu le flux d'air dans ces appareils ou s'il y avait différents types de flux d'air ou seulement un type ? Et pourquoi ils utilisaient du fumier ? Il semble un peu étrange de mettre du fumier, du fumier polyéthyléum algélique, dans le design. C'est un peu bizarre que ça soit en contact avec le flux d'air. C'est une idée étrange. Et il semble être une idée qu'ils ont continué d'utiliser d'un modèle à l'autre. Donc c'est quelque chose que nous pourrions questionner, juste en principe. Pour être en contact avec le flux d'air pour un matériau qui n'est pas nécessaire pour être en contact avec le flux d'air est bizarre. Et aussi du fumier polyéthyléum algélique, nous savons que c'est un matériau plastique qui ne vieillit pas bien. So necessarily, it's going to start to erode, and it's going to produce dust. So it would be interesting to have this type of basic information, to know how things are manufactured and how the air flows within ventilators. Thank you. Are there other questions? So I suggest that we now move on to our first hearing, which is that of Mr. Trushow. He is a member of the FFAIR, which is the French Federation of Associations and Friends of Patients with respiratory insufficiency or disability. So it's a patient association which is directly concerned by this topic, and they take part in our stakeholder meetings regarding this situation. So do we have Mr. Trushow online with us? So, Mr. Trushow, I give you the floor. I've already introduced you briefly, but please do not hesitate to add to this introduction yourself. So you have the floor. Thank you. I am a member of the French Federation of Respiratory Failure Patients. In spite of everything that's been said, let me tell you how we have gone through this Philips affair on the patient's side. So we have five federations that were presenting their hearings, and also, we would like to give you the greater public's point of view. So before anything, I am alone here with you today, but I am the ambassador of the 380,000 people who've been mentioned before. So the users of CPAP devices, so continuous positive airway pressure, and the non-invasive ventilators, NIC. So how did this Philips situation started? So an announcement was made by Philips on the American Stock Exchange, and this information only became medical, so to speak, later, and it arrived in France later. So at the very first hearing, as patients, we weren't there. But this shortcoming was quickly solved, and we now have five federations who have taken part in all of your work from day one. If I may, I am going to tell you about the points that I would like to tell you about regarding the information of patients. And I'm going to divide this information into two parts: the information that we've received ourselves as federation throughout the work that was carried out during hearings, and then the greater public information, which has triggered all of this anxiety with this risk of cancer, with this potential replacement of medical device, and the trust that people place in their device. So regarding the information of patients that is separate from that of federations, the five federations who are present during the hearings. First of all, if Philips is a manufacturer of medical devices, it is not a manufacturer of information, for sure. And why is that? Well, because the rule that was required by Philips from the very beginning was that there should be no recording whatsoever, and that everything that was being said during these hearings was staying within the rules of confidentiality. So writings stay, but words can be forgotten. So we ended up taking notes, written notes. It was the only way to keep a trace of what had been said. It is quite surprising for such a big company. Then the federations asked questions to the Philips group, and the very first question that was asked, the most simple one: what is the name of the manufacturer of the foam? And is this manufacturer also providing foam for other respiratory device manufacturers? And Philips' answer was very clear. They told us that there was business secrecy, and so we had no answer whatsoever. So we then asked several questions, but Philips gave very vague answers or no answers at all. Let me give you an example of a vague answer. The respect of the timeline for the replacement of devices at the end of March this year was presented with 20% of possibility instead of the 75% that was requested by the ANSM for the end of June this year. So this means that the health police was involved, but Philips remained very vague as to the possibilities to get all of these devices replaced. While at the same time, on the addition of the 21st of April 2022, we learned that Philips is replacing devices in other markets outside of France because devices are sold directly to patients in these countries or only sold to patients in these countries. This seems very surprising. On top of that, when we have a look at the clinical trials and toxicological analysis, the real risks for patients and the carcinogenic risk, well, we had no answer whatsoever or extremely vague answers as to these risks as well. Regarding the risk of cancer, at first, they said that there was a risk, and then they said that there wasn't in the declarations that they made in the US and France and in the rest of Europe. A typical example of the omerta. When Philips was asked during these hearings what their recommendations were to avoid risks for patients, there were a lot more echoed in the film "The Big Blue" than there were in the answers given by Philips. They made very vague answers, and it even became ludicrous during these hearings. Why? Well, on the website, Philips, with an email address, it was... an email address was given where you should send your device back. And another email address was telling us to keep using this device. So the question is, why were there two different answers to the same question as to whether we should keep using these devices? The answer that was given was that there was an email address for French-speaking users and another one for French people. So we asked why, and what I'm about to say might seem a little bit surprising, but it's true. So we might think that French patients had a more robust health than Canadian French speakers or Swiss French speaker. And if I say this, it's because we have written proof of this with the said addresses. And the worst of all is that the whole financial calculation was led clear on the hearing of the 21st of April. The question was asked for the replacement of non-invasive ventilators, and the answer that the 26,000 people who are using none of these ventilators were a limited number of people. So I will let you make your own mind up about this answer. So following all these hearings, we've had no complete answers. They seem specialized in not giving answers and not only in medical devices. So the NSM decided to use a health notice, a safety notice against this group. First of all, I must say that zero plus zero equals this result. There was a big affair in the automobile sector, which is called the diesel gate. The manufacturer is communicated via the press. Well, I think we can use the word respiratory gate. Philips didn't say anything. So communication towards patients was then entrusted to doctors and home healthcare providers, with a result that was vastly different from one doctor to another. Some did an excellent job, others waited, others didn't say anything. But the thing that all of these have in common is that Philips never justified anything. They didn't prove anything scientifically or medically. They didn't provide any scientific or medical evidence. They only recognized the risks following the intervention of the FFIR through the media, the main risk being that of cancers. And people wonder when their devices will be replaced, and they're not reassured by the answers they get. The people who have obtained a new device wonder if it is compliant. If there are no risks with this new device, how can we know that, how we control this? There is no control anymore on the situation. So what can we say? Patients became prisoners of their own health and their own devices. Patients ended up stuck between a rock and a hard place, the rock being their pathology and the hard place being their device. So between what's worse and what's worse, all of the patients that we are, we have to make a choice, and we want to find the least terrible situation. I introduced myself as the humble ambassador of 380,000 people, and I am myself one of the patients. I have sleep apnea. And to answer your question that you asked before, I kept a little manual to follow up my device. I've been using this device since the 30th of August 2005, and I've used it until October 2021. So I've used the Dream Station device. And this is striking because Dream Station... For me, it's not a Dream Station. It's the beginning of a nightmare. Why? Because last year, I was operated for a thyroid cancer, and I'm still followed closely for a risk of cancer. I'm not accusing anyone. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a scientist. I would like to know if I've been betrayed, if I can still trust my device, or if it's just a coincidence today that I am ill. I would like to thank you for your attention. And if you have any questions, I am here to answer them. Thank you, Mr. Trushow. Would someone like to react to Mr. Trushow's presentation? Do you have a question? Professor Louroye. Yes, I'm Mr. Kitha Louroye, from the French Federation of Pneumology. Do you have feedback from your affiliates? Do you have a number of people who have shared their problems, their anxiety, who might have decided on their own to stop using their device? Do you have data regarding this? In terms of data, we've had many, many testimonies following the declaration in the media. Unfortunately, I cannot provide you exact figures. But what I can tell you about is that people have lost their trust in their device, and I fought to tell them, let's be logical. We need these devices. As users of the devices, we know the risks. If we were to stop using them, there's a risk of stroke, a risk of heart attack. And if we continue to use these devices, we avoid all of these risks. So as a representative of respiratory failure patients, I tried to make a wise decision, but many testimonies have proven that people are scared. They are scared to use their device. Thank you, Mr. Mazan. Yes, Yann Mazan for France Asso Santé. In terms of information provided to patients, do you confirm this analysis? When I listen to you, the information regarding risks, and in particular, the risk of cancer of Philips devices, the information was mainly communicated through the media, which means that we collectively failed to inform these patients by other means. Yes, I confirm that. Because the risk of cancer was first presented by Philips, but it was vague answers. It was... They avoided answering. It was a cat and a mouse game. And for the actual risk of cancer, they only mentioned it later, after this media campaign. But before that, to be honest, it's something that was overlooked. Are there other comments? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trushow. It was important to hear you. This is very clear as to what you expect in this committee, and also, you've explained how brutal the first announcement of a potential risk of cancer was for these patients. Thank you. I wish you a nice day. Thank you. Have a nice day. I would like to thank the members of the committee for hearing me out. I suggest that we move on to the next hearing, which is that of Madame Dubochelle, Mrs. Dubochelle. Mrs. Dubochelle is a representative of home healthcare providers. You are the speaker for these home healthcare providers. I will let you introduce yourself. You can tell us who you are here to represent and give us your testimony. Thank you. Thank you. Indeed, I'm Alexandra Dubochelle. I represent all of the home healthcare provider professional entities. I have a mandate from them. I'm here to answer your questions and to tell you about our activities as home healthcare providers and the actions that we took within the framework of this crisis and the difficulties that we've encountered. So home healthcare providers, for those of you who do not know this, we support patients who have to use these devices. Of course, the devices in question either as life support or as treatment for sleep apnea. So we provide the equipment, the material, the Philips device in this case, or any other device, for these patients. And we provide support, follow-up. Sometimes, this is done remotely because in the case of sleep apnea, we can do this remotely. And we ensure that we are in touch with the patient and with the doctor who prescribed this treatment, all through the treatment. So as a brief reminder of the situation, following the publication by Philips of the recall of the devices in question in May 2021, from May to July 2021, providers were invited to the brainstorming regarding the recommendations following this recall by the ANSM. And at the end of July 2022, the ANSM published recommendations following this recall. Between July and October, providers took part in a campaign of information to tell patients about the recommendations. So the ANSM was recommending to keep using these devices while waiting for replacement. And also, throughout this campaign of information, providers were... providers took part in this campaign, of course, to inform the users of these devices. It is worth noting that for sleep apnea and life support ventilators, we have slightly more than 1,400,000 patients throughout the country that are equipped with medical devices. This recall was for 370,000 patients. This recall was for 370,000 patients. So the patients in question have been informed through this information campaign. This information campaign did not create further concern for patients. When it was the case, we told the ANSM about the side effects and the symptoms that patients were declaring. In December and January, a strong mediatization campaign took place. This is also linked to the fact that Philips was incapable of replacing these devices. They proved to be incapable to replace them. We received very few new devices. So this media coverage led to a strong peak of contacts with patients, including from patients who were not equipped by Philips devices. They were telling us about their anxiety in light of the risks that were mentioned, of course, because of the use of these devices in this recall. This media campaign created a tsunami of support required promise. We had to share all the recommendation, once again, all the information that we had available at the time without having any date as for the potential replacement of these devices. So up until February, we had to do that. From February onwards, there was a decrease in the number of contacts with patients because of this anxiety. But some providers observed that people not necessarily stopped using the device, but they reduced their use significantly for some of them. But this problem was then progressively solved. Home healthcare providers, even if they don't receive devices directly from Philips for replacement, but they initiated replacement of their own stocks. Because in December, when there were only 3% to 4% of devices being replaced by Philips, they replaced 14% of their own materials, home healthcare providers, in cooperation with the manufacturers and prescribers. So this is to give you a little bit of a reminder as for the situation. As for the assessment of risks, I think that this is what your committee is here for. Well, home healthcare providers cannot pronounce themselves on the nature of risk. There are two epidemiological studies that have been published that seem reassuring. But we have the same information as you do so far. What I can say though is that within the framework of the ANSM project to try to carry out a massive study in France, home healthcare providers have follow-up data, treatability data for the devices for several years because we follow patients that have sleep apnea or that require life support because of respiratory failure. So they can take part in the analysis of the feasibility of this epidemiological study because they can make their data available. As I was saying today, it's about 1,400,000 patients that are being treated. So this epidemiological study could be led by the ANSM and it could be of such a size. But since 2018, we started this remote follow-up of patients. So this means that we have even more data available. So of course, if I can add one quick point. The support provided to patients and their follow-up from the moment they obtain their device up until the end of their treatment is carried out by home healthcare provider in close collaboration with the prescriber. And they're often in the front line. They're often the first person that patients are in touch with because they visit them regularly to learn about their, to follow up their treatment. So within the framework of this support, all of the protocols to provide devices, etc., all of this is, of course, respected by home providers. This is all I could tell you, and I'm available if you had any questions. Thank you, Mrs. Dubochelle. Mr. Mazan? Yes, Yann Mazan for France Asso Santé. In December 2021, so before the media campaign, you presented a study, the results of a study, which were showing that out of 100,000 people, you consider that 100% of them had been informed of this problem. I wanted to know if you confirmed this. And the sample that we presented at the time, yes, I confirm. It was a sample that we had chosen based on the data collected by our members. We had several phases in our information campaign. So from July, from the very first time that an announcement was made and this information was provided from the ANSM by, to all of our members. And for several organizations, including mine, there was a model of a letter that we suggested to home providers to use, to inform patients. And then it was for home healthcare providers to give this information. So this information campaign started in July and up until October. It was alongside a strong media campaign that took place between December and January. Of course, we didn't wait a new safety note in March 2022 to inform our patients. Once again, we are in touch with them directly. We support them. And as soon as we have a question regarding these devices, as soon as patients have a question regarding these devices, we're the first ones that they get in touch with. So I think it was in November that we had the sample, on the 4th of November, and the sample that we had surveyed. All of the respondents had told us that indeed they had sent the information that dated back to July. Mrs. Vielisco Dupac. Yes, good morning. I had a question regarding the epidemiological study that you mentioned and the link with the ANSM. You said that you have all the information in terms of treatability of the equipment used by patients. Do you have data regarding the potential pathologies of patients?
Not necessarily. For the treatment of sleep apnea, we do. But not necessarily for life support.
The information regarding the pathology of patients and the treatment, sometimes it will be identified, sometimes it won't be. For sleep apnea, it's a specific device. So naturally, as soon as it is set up, in theory, we have all the information linked to sleep apnea. We have all the information linked to the invoicing to social security, of course, to the social security number of the patient, the serial number of the device that has been set up, and all throughout the follow-up carried out by the home healthcare provider. I don't know if you discussed this with the ANSM, but could we cross your information with other data to try to see if there are links between some pathologies and devices? Yes, well, maybe the ANSM will answer this better than I will. But from the first analyses carried out of the data available, and these analyses were carried out by the ANSM teams to see if we had crossing of data from healthcare providers and from the SNS for the follow-up of potential other pathologies, linked or not to the use of the device, to the treatment. Indeed, if I may, add to this, there's a study, an ongoing study, to see if it could be feasible to have an epidemiological study where we would cross the data coming from home healthcare providers and from the national system, national healthcare system, that would give us information on all of the other aspects of the state of health of patients. But in the national data, we do not have information regarding the type of device that patients use. So this is underway to see if, based on all the data available, we could launch an epidemiological study. Mrs. Duplo?
Yes, good morning. I have a question regarding the information provided by Philips. Philips mentioned that the devices should be replaced or that the new foam made of silicone should be used because this new foam did not have the same problem as the previous one. And Philips indicated that they were going to send information to home healthcare providers to change these foams because it was either replacing devices or replacing the foam by a silicone foam, which is more adapted and which didn't have these degradation issues and these problems with VOCs. No, no, no. The information obtained by Philips, we hardly ever have information from Philips. Our home healthcare providers are not even aware of the dates at which they will receive devices. And the rates of devices replaced are far below the rates that had been announced. And so far, we have not had any more information on the causal alternative foam. Thank you.
If I may, I just have one quick question as well. We know that patients are, of course, very nervous because of the announcement made by Philips. Do you have an idea of the number of patients that might have stopped their treatment? We had noticed that about 5% of patients at the height of the crisis had stopped their treatment. But this percentage might have evolved over time and also as devices were being replaced. At this time, I do not have any more information on this. Between the moment when you told me about the hearing and the hearing itself, I didn't have time to collect this data from our members. During the frame, within the framework of the media campaign, we have noticed indeed that there's a major increase of the anxiety of patients, which of course have been calling us in great numbers. But we have not observed a real increase in the number of symptoms. You've also received the reports. You know when we've had peaks of reports and they were parallel to the peak of information, the height of the crisis. And so far, we have not observed a real difference in the number of reports. This is why this media campaign has also driven these reports. Because the ANSM was telling us that 59% of reports were done by home healthcare providers. So really, they're on the front line, they listen to patients, they try to provide them with all the information they need at any given time. But of course, we depend on the information provided to us by the ANSM and by scientists. Mrs. Fournier?
I have a question regarding the criteria based on which people receive one brand or one device rather than another. This is a medical decision. So it's the prescriber who prescribes a given brand or a given device, absolutely. They can test a brand and sometimes they can specify the brand. They don't always do it. There isn't always a specification of the number of devices. It also depends on the stocks available among healthcare providers. But quite often, there are precisions. Professor Leroy? Yes, it all depends on the stocks available. So depending on the healthcare provider or the association, a choice can be made to buy one brand or another. In my region, in my association, we had chosen, fortunately, not to buy from Philips, for instance, for other reasons. So there are few people around my hospital who have Philips devices. But it's a coincidence because we chose this material. But I think that this type of choices are made around friends. Yes, it is what I was saying. It is not an indication, if it's not an indication of the prescriber, if the prescriber tells us that they want a given brand for reasons linked to the treatment, for physiological or morphological reasons, if there are no such indications, well, it will depend on the stock available and on manufacturers that sell these devices to providers. It can change. There can be different partnerships. But usually, providers can provide any brand. And just as a little precision, in many structures, there are scientific committees, technical committees that make recommendations as for the choice of material depending on the pathologies. And this is often reviewed on a yearly basis. And do we know the number of cases in which a given prescription is done, in which a specific brand is prescribed? I don't have an answer to that. Thank you, I suggest that we now move on to the next hearing. Thank you very much, Mrs. Dubochelle. Mr. Mazan?
Just a quick question, I wanted to know if there were specific recommendations that Philips made in case of a failure of a device. Today, I don't have an answer, so I'm not going to give you any, as far as I am aware. These are the medical devices. And then the business partnerships for the for the replacement of the devices or for providing a given device. I don't know about this specifically. Thank you, I suggest that we move on. Thank you, Mrs. Dubochelle, for your answers, thank you. We're going to move on to the next presentation with regards to medical device vigilance. It's always very difficult to come to conclusions regarding this medical device vigilance data. Also in case of, also to know who is to blame. But we wanted to have such a presentation to make sure that the reports that we obtained at the agency were objective. So I will give the floor to Mrs. Peregrini and Mrs. Ardio. So it is a work that has been carried out in collaboration with the ANSM. Sophie Ardio, I'm the assessor in medical device vigilance in charge of the type of products that we are talking about today at the ANSM. I'm going to present a report that was sent to the expert members of this TSC. And I'm here with Mrs. Peregrini. She is the regional coordinator for medical device vigilance for the Pays de Loire region. This report was carried out by two regional coordinators who became speakers for the assessment. So Mrs. Ardio and Peregrini with the support of a medical advisor from the ANSM. To carry out this report, we extracted all of the database of the ANSM. That was a previous slide. We extracted all the database of the ANSM in Excel spreadsheets and we selected two types of devices. So only the Philips Respironics one. So the CPAPs and the ventilators were used at home. Next slide. Next slide. Just like for any use of medical device, there are adverse reactions that are to be expected with this type of treatment. At the bottom of the slide, we indicated two publications that tell you about frequent such reactions with the use of such devices, and it's also symptoms that are reported in the notices of Philips devices and other brand devices. So there's dry nose or mouth, tears, redness in the eyes that can also be linked to allergies, bloating, ENT signs, otitis, sinusitis, runny nose, hardness of the voice, and erythema of the skin, and bleeding nose. Next slide. So the report is divided into two main parts. So we have the medical device vigilance before June 2021 and after June 2021. So before June 2021, so before 1998 and May 2021, we received 69 reports regarding these two devices. So CPAPs and ventilators to be used at home, all different types of models. We see that these reports for the CPAP devices, three quarters of these reports come from the Philips Respironics manufacturer, a short, a small rate of them that have been mentioned by citizens, by users, and for respirators, it's about half and half. Half of these reports coming from Philips and half of them coming from home healthcare providers. Out of these 69 reports, of course, in one report, we can have several adverse reactions. So we have 77 such adverse reactions that have been reported. There is no report that mentions a cancer or a hemipathy. We have five reports that mention the death of the patient without it being possible to create a direct link between the death and the use of the device. It could be, for instance, a patient who passed out, fainted during the use of this device without a clear causal link established. It can also be a patient who unplugged their ventilator voluntarily, and it can also be a case of a device that stopped working because it ran out of battery and it was not plugged in. Out of these 16, nine reports, we have 16 of them that describe adverse reactions that are mentioned in the safety notices of Philips of June 2021. We have 12 for CPAP devices. So it's ENT problems, headaches, black particles seen in the device, respiratory issues, and we have four on ventilators. So headaches, respiratory issues, nausea, and ENT problems. So these are common symptoms associated with the use of these devices. I will give the floor to Mrs. Peregrino for the second part of the report after June 2021. So during the period from June 2021 until the 30th of April 2021, we have had 2,853 such reports. Most of them have been done by home healthcare providers, both for CPAP devices as for ventilators. Next slide, please. Out of these 2,853 reports, 40 have then been sent to the user desk of the ANSM, four were excluded of the analysis because they were not linked with devices that were mentioned in the safety notice of Philips, and 219 were considered as duplicates because they were both done by a healthcare provider and a patient. So we only kept 2,590 reports, 97% of them were for CPAP devices and 3% for ventilators. Out of all these reports, 5,315 different adverse reactions have been mentioned. So we need to bear in mind that one report can be made up of different adverse reactions, which is why we have a higher number of adverse reactions than the number of reports. So the most common ones are symptoms that can also appear in the use of these devices, such as irritations, coughing, or dry nose or mouth. Out of these adverse reactions, severe pathologies have been mentioned. Among them, we have solid cancers that are linked to the multiplication of cancerous and abnormal molecules, hemipathies, which are the multiplication of abnormal or cancerous cells in the blood. We also have adenopathies and nodules that have been reported. As for solid cancers, out of the 108 solid cancers that have been reported, about a third of them are lung cancers. 0.5% of the serious pathologies are hemipathies, so 28 of the reports that have been made with the ANSM, and 15 of them are lymphomas. Next slide, please. Out of the other severe pathologies that have been reported, we have nodules and adenopathies. So we have 60 such cases without underlying cancerous pathologies linked to them. So out of the eight reports mentioning adenopathy, the main place where this adenopathy occurs is ENT, ear, nose, and throat. There are also lung symptoms. There have been 48 reports for such symptoms, and most of them are infections, infections of the lungs for the most part. Next slide, please. And we have 36 reports of cardiovascular pathologies that were given to the ANSM, and it's mostly pathologies that are expected in the evolution of sleep apnea or respiratory failure cases. So to conclude the analysis of this medical device vigilance, most of the symptoms that have been reported are present in literature and are effects that are to be expected, that are potentially to be expected in, with the use of such devices. The analysis of this data of medical device vigilance cannot establish that the use of this medical device is to be blamed for these adverse reactions, and we would need further epidemiological studies to complete this analysis. Thank you for your attention. Thank you. Thank you very much. We can make a few comments or questions. Mr. Garnier? Have you had cases of black particles reported, as was the case before the accident? Because this is what is interesting if we want to look at whether the foam degrades. Yes, there have been reports mentioning the presence of black particles. I don't have the figure in mind anymore. We would have to give you the exact figure, but this is the what would best prove the degradation of the foam. We have a few in very limited numbers, but these are reports that we also had before June 2021. And in many cases, it is because of an external cause, external to the device. So we really need to have a look at the analysis. There are indeed a few cases, a few such cases, very limited number. It's, we can easily provide you with this piece of information. It is in the report, it's just that we don't know it by heart. So there are 36 of them out of the 2,000 odd reports. I had a question regarding heat and humidity, because it was mentioned that high heat and humidity could further degrade the foam. Did you create a link with the regions where there's a higher number of reports? For instance, we were talking about Reunion Island, but there are other areas where there's a lot of heat and humidity. We have not studied this in this framework because there is going to be a significant amount of bias, because this is reported in most cases by home healthcare providers. And they are the ones who provide material on a whole region in most cases. So this would require for home healthcare providers to say where each device was provided, and it's an information that we do not always have. Sometimes it is mentioned, but we do not always have it. Mrs. Yagubi?
I would like to insist on what my colleague was saying. Indeed, black particles are the final process in the degradation, but before we see black particles, there are several phases that take place, but they're not necessarily black. The particles come from polyurethane as it degrades, and when they get to the face when they become black, it's really the way and of the degradation process. So there might be particles long before they become black, and you take them into account in your report. Because I've seen indeed that you mentioned black particles in your report, but I think that there can be particles long before they become black.
We say black particles in the testimonies. We don't have all 36 of them in mind right now, but most of the time when there are reports is that they're already in the face when they are black. We don't have in mind any report where they mention other types of particles. Yes, indeed. The patient or the healthcare provider mentions black particles. But there is no report mentioning particles of another color or of another aspect or with other characteristics of degradation of the foam. It's either black particles or no mention of particles whatsoever. Mrs. Fournier? I wanted to say, I think it would be interesting to have data regarding the reports for other devices than these Philips ones, before June 2021, before the mid-year campaign regarding these problems. Other problematic devices, and maybe we could compare these reports with the reports So this is work that's been carried out from the way beginning of this situation. We've had a look at our database, and we looked if we had reports on Philips devices or not, and it's not the case. Before June 2021, there were no reports in material vigilance that would allow us to identify a problem of this type, regardless of the brand. Yes? Mrs. Yagubi? Another question still regarding the degradation of this foam. Do we have an idea of the state of the device when these reports occur? So when they mention the presence of black particles, do we have an idea of the state of the device at that stage? In light of the reports we have, no. We cannot say whether the device is in a good state, whether it's been well taken care of by the patient. We don't have this information in the reports. You don't even know how long it's been in use. You don't even know, you don't have the date at which it's been put on the market. We don't have it right away. But these are elements that we will have following the analysis of the manufacturer. When we have this type of reports, we send them to the manufacturer, which will then carry out an investigation, and in his investigation report, we have this information, the state of the device, if there's something striking, and the age of the device as well. This information is not given right away, but the manufacturer provides it. Because if all of the black foam emissions were for devices that had been in use for more than five years, this would be an interesting piece of information. In the reports made by home healthcare providers in general, they give us the date at which it was put in service, in use, for the ones I have processed anyway. Yes. Well, I didn't have this information for the healthcare providers that I have, the reports from healthcare providers that I have processed. So for this type of device, we talk about the state of the foam indeed, and it's what we blame in particular, but if I understand, there are pipings that are made of other materials. Do we have an idea of the state of these pipes? So for all the consumable piping, this is managed by the home healthcare provider who has to abide by requirements, and they have to regularly change the material and replace it. So declarations can be made, but they will target the consumable in particular that is associated to this device, but we don't have any specific report regarding this. Very well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sophie. Thank you, Perrine. I suggest that we now move on, and we can now welcome the Philips Respironics company for our next hearing. This hearing is important. It is necessary in light of the risks that have been announced in June 2021. So where do we stand a year later? So the goal of this hearing is to have an update regarding the tests carried out by Philips Respironics. So either on the emission of organic, of volatile organic compounds or of particles, and the assessment of risks carried out by this company, or how this assessment has evolved since June 2021. So good morning. Good morning to Philips Respironics. We have several participants today. So we have John Cronin, Jan Benek, Denver Falk, Kimberly Shelley, Julian Raspolovic, and Juan Sanchez Cervera. I'm going to let you introduce yourselves. Thank you for taking part in this hearing. And then we will move on to your presentation. Thank you. You have between 25 to 30 minutes, and then we will have about 15 minutes for question and answer session. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good morning. I really want to, on behalf of Philips, thank you for the opportunity to address this group. And we have a lot to cover in this short time, and we've chosen to take the role where I will be the lead presenter, and with me, I have a number of subject matter experts within Philips, Jan Benek, Denver Falk, and Kimberly Shelley. I trust that the slide deck is up. I cannot see it. Can you confirm that for me, please? Oh, there we are. Okay. Thank you. Could you go to the next slide, please? My name is John Cronin. I'm the medical leader for Philips Sleep and Respiratory Care. I'll be presenting today, and with me, I have three of my colleagues who are subject matter experts. And out of respect for the time and attention of this group, I think what I'll do is go ahead and I will invite them into our question and answer session so that we can make sure we have a robust and lively dialogue. I did want to thank you for the opportunity to present to this group, and thus far, it's been very compelling to hear the stories of different stakeholders, and I appreciate what the ANSM has put together. I do believe we all share the same goal, which is the safe and effective care of patients for a device, a category, and a therapy that is so compelling. My background as the medical leader is one of respiratory specialists. I'm board certified in pulmonary critical care and sleep medicine, and over 20 years I've been able to have the good fortune to take care of patients and prescribe all of these devices and manage them over time. So I have a deep appreciation of just the importance and the benefit of this field. Can you advance to the next slide, please? So just an effort to make sure that we're all on the same page, and I think every member of this group knows why they're here, obviously, but basically, I wanted to highlight the basics of this issue. But basically, I wanted to highlight the basics of this issue, namely that in June of 2021, we had a field safety notice that highlighted the potential health risk related to the sound abatement foam in our respiratory support devices, the CPAP family, the BiPAP family, advanced therapies, and the Trilogy ventilator. This recall, as you know, is really centered around the material component of P E P U R foam, which is a polyester polyurethane foam. This is an open-celled foam structure that really serves a functional component with inside the device. It's a sound reduction approach that helps reduce noise for patients and providers. Pictured here, you can see the different device categories. And I would just highlight that the foam itself is really internal to the device, not visible or seen by the patients. It is present in a finite amount. And each platform has a specific design that might change its engineering, the amount of foam, the placement of the foam near and around or within the air path. And so each device on some level is unique. But the unifying consideration here is the is the P E P U R foam. Furthermore, what you can see from the boxes underneath the device, we've highlighted two different types of foam, Foam A and Foam B. And I just want to mention that these are both polyester polyurethane foam constituents, but they have some slight material differences that might be meaningful for future testing updates. There is also a foam type C not pictured here, which is a polyether foam, which is present in the OmniLab family. But that's not subject to our discussion at this point. And then I just added this graphic to emphasize and show that the when we look at the actual units as part of this recall, if we look at the number of registered devices, about eighty one percent of them rest within the CPAP family. And that's not to say that they are more important, but rather just to highlight that most of our testing to date has centered on that CPAP family. Could you advance the slide, please? The the field safety notice was based on the health hazard that highlighted two specific concerns related to the foam. And just to review those, the first is really the one of foam degradation, which is governed by hydrolysis, further impacted by higher relative humidity, higher ambient temperatures, as well as the exposure to ozone, which we all know to be a cleaning technology that is not used worldwide, but in specific markets. Furthermore, the material level testing of the actual foam was unfavorable. And this highlighted the potential for cytotoxicity, genotoxicity, irritation, and sensitization, all related to the ten nine ninety-three ISO standard. I'll also note that this was really based on a model of foam, which is what we call a lab-aged foam. One of the considerations in testing the impact of the foam is that this hydrolysis process takes time. And to understand the dynamics of the foam, we developed a artificial aging a process so that we could get insights and learning on the foam faster than just waiting years for it to degrade. Secondly, we have the VOC hazard, which was highlighted. And this is based on eighteen five six two testing, which really brought forward the concern about air path exposure to two compounds of concern, notable for the possibility of genotoxic effects on those compounds, really based on structural alerts and class effects. The underlying conclusion, based on these two failure modes, really came to the the medical panel and the determination this is unacceptable and that the combined failure modes related to the P E P U R foam represented an unacceptable risk to patient health when considering the potential for harm. And I want to emphasize that the potential for harm. When we talk about the harms that we assessed initially as part of this, we had ten reports of harm. In general, I've looked at all ten of these. And these were generally self-limited, nonspecific concerns of the upper airway. We have reports of things like cough, headache, congestion. And specifically, we I want to emphasize that we had no evidence of human cancers. We had no evidence of any deaths as part of this evaluation. That being said, these were nonspecific issues. And we considered that device reporting would consistently be under-reported in general and that the potential harms of this bio endpoint testing would be considered a new or novel harm that a patient or provider would not necessarily be able to associate with their use of the device. We convene an expert medical panel, much like you've done here. And we really evaluated this, really on and highlighted two theoretical risks. One is the theoretical risk of cancer based on the testing. And then the second is the theoretical risk of patients with limited pulmonary reserve, specifically talking about COPD patients who, if exposed to physical particulate matter, might have a more adverse airway event than someone else without that pathology. We we consider this to be a patient population at greatest risk. And out of abundance of caution, we came to this conclusion that this was unacceptable. Next slide, please. This is fine. You're on the right slide. So that was our first assessment. And that was June 2021. Fast forward to December of 2021. In that time interval, there was a tremendous amount of activity in testing. This really wanted highlighted a couple of critical things for the medical panel. The VOC consideration was one that was really brought forward based on one test. And this one test has now been augmented by twenty five additional tests. Well, as qualified third-party experts in toxicology, chemistry, and medical science. The conclusion here is stated was that exposure to the VOCs is not typically anticipated to result in long-term health, health considerations. And those considerations really highlighted the the fact that there's no evidence at this time to support the prior notions of genotoxicity, toxicity, mutagenicity, nephrotoxicity, and neurotoxicity, as was originally reported in relation to the VOC. There were two caveats to this. One is that the Dream Station One platform was the only platform tested and that this does not account for devices that have been exposed to ozone. Next slide, please. Highlighted here are a schema or a caption of those tests that were conducted, listed chronologically. And again, we were able to augment the single test. In row number two here, you can see the single test highlighted. And then after that time, we were able to test multiple device platforms. Generally, these rested on new platforms. We had twelve tests that were tested at different labs, all passing the toxicology risk assessment. We had three tests that we utilized the lab-aged model to see if we could understand different kinetics of the ISO eighteen five six two dash three standard and its impact on the devices. And then we were able to, early on, test five devices that we had returned from the field that were otherwise dysfunctional. But these five devices all had some degree of particulate degradation or foam degradation. We also had some eighteen five six two dash two testing on the particulate matter on this particular model as well. Regardless, the this was really thought to be a very meaningful clinical update for patients and providers. Yet we didn't recommend any change to the field safety notice or the or the device recall that was previously stated. Next slide, please. Since that time, I'll note that in April twenty twenty twenty-two, at the request of the FDA, we made publicly available our ongoing test plan and available results. This is part of our commitment and desire to provide a dynamic program designed to help patients, providers to understand the ongoing risk. And as we know, testing is quite technical. This is an effort to summarize the test results that feed into the ongoing risk analysis. Next slide, please. This is a schema that highlights how we're approaching this. And I trust that members of the ANSM have seen some of this previously, as well as other members of the committee. However, what we have here is a device-specific testing strategy, highlighting both the different models that we'll test. Here we have the Dream Station One, and we have this in several different versions. We have testing on brand-new devices. We have testing on aged devices that are returned naturally from the field. And then we have testing on devices that are exposed to this artificial aging strategy. And then finally, we have a separate line of testing, looking at devices exposed just to ozone to see if there's any different risk profile associated in those conditions. And I'd like to emphasize that this testing schema will be applied to the the different platforms as indicated in the footnote here, so that we'll have very device-specific risks that will help patients that might be different in terms of their underlying conditions and underlying reasons for using these devices. I do want to note in a an important constraint, which is highlighted in this box to the right, that really tests, these tests are incredibly time-consuming. And I'm not a testing expert. However, the eighteen five six two air path test can take weeks, if not months, to complete the extraction. And leachable testing sometimes can take five to six months. So the ongoing testing that's in the background is quite robust. We've increased our testing capacity sixfold. But we have constraints on this globally in terms of what's available. But I can assure you that the team is working very diligently in the background to make this happen. Next slide, please. Well, we do have a post-market surveillance and post-market clinical follow-up program to speak of and to provide device vigilance. And just a caveat here that the submission of vigilance reports itself is not evidence that the device caused or contributed to the adverse event. But I thought this information, at least initially, would be helpful to this group as you try to understand and make recommendations for your your patients in France. Globally, we have alleged events. And this this global number, I'll I'll break out to a small subset of the numbers from France as we know them. But we report at the time of this May reporting a total of twenty-one thousand nine hundred sixteen device malfunctions, three thousand one hundred and twenty serious injuries, and one hundred and ninety-four deaths. We are receiving a tremendous number of ongoing complaints that are on a continual iterative process of evaluating and analyzing. This data from France, I think, is interesting. We were not aware of the ANSM number of deaths that were reported just a few minutes ago. And this is something that we will begin investigating as well. But the the nomenclature in the French numbers reads across, although the the words are different, malfunctions as the same as the all other reportable incidents. And then serious injuries would equate to the unanticipated serious deterioration or in the state of health. I'll also note, as we talk about post-market surveillance, we do have some early data in an analysis of about two hundred thousand devices that have been returned. And we are reporting roughly a two percent foam degradation, less than two percent foam degradation rate in those returned devices as initial trend analysis. And so I think that helps put some appreciation as to how frequent this this issue is. I will also comment that our early analysis is interesting in that the reporting of foam degradation does not always equate to actual foam being present. So these devices are run for sometimes thousands of hours over their device lifetime. And we do see the occasional occurrence of organic matter and inorganic matter that comes in through the air path from the home environment. So particulate matter reports from the patient is subject to somewhat of a an investigation or evaluation. And just because there is particulate matter does not necessarily equate to foam. However, we're taking these matters very seriously, and they're being evaluated on an ongoing basis. Next slide, please. Just turning to sort of a graphic, which helps understand some of the trends in our reporting system, this is simply a a trend report looking at the monthly reports of of complaints received. And the star here in red is the is the month of the original field safety notice in 2021. And so what we went from is very limited monthly reports over the over the span of this recall from two thousand from two thousand eight, now to really an explosion of reports, which I think is understandable in light of the field safety notice that was announced. It's not too surprising. But also, in terms of the nonspecific nature of the harms and the and the risks that we highlighted, patients, and I think we've heard that loud and clear today, and I hear that every day, the anxiety and concern of patients is warranted and understood. And that has resulted in in this issue. So this is a a dynamic list, and it's an important list that we continue to evaluate in an ongoing process. Next slide, please. So in summary, to wrap up, I just wanted to kind of frame this to say that the initial field safety notice highlighted the potential health risk and captured a theoretical worst-case scenario consideration, really out of an abundance of caution when assessing a new, novel risk to patients that was not fully characterized. Those initial data were limited, but it assessed the complexity of two different failure modes, combining the degradation with the VOC. And the concern for patient safety around this novel risk was highlighted. We we certainly have been conducting a rigorous and comprehensive test program to try to understand the risk and help patients and providers process this. This has included the VOC HHE update, which I highlighted, which helps to help understand the the specific VOC risk. And to me, it was a very meaningful clean clinical update. We continue an ongoing test program to characterize and understand the VOC in particulate hazard. And then we are have it, we have an ongoing post-market surveillance program that is is ramping up and meeting the explosion in in reports. We certainly maintain a clinical evaluation program and report, which also captures a lot of the work that's going on within the field. And I think you have highlighted within your sessions a few of the those important works that have been done on epidemiologic level. And we're doing our best to work with ANSM to support those efforts as well. Accordingly, at this time, we really suggest no change to the current field safety notice. And Philips advises patients using affected CPAP and BiPAP devices to contact their physician or care provider before making any changes to their prescribed therapy. Clinical decisions should be made together with the physician to determine the benefit of continuing therapy with the device and whether it outweighs the possible risks identified in the field safety notice. So with that, I'll conclude and open it up to questions and answers. I I will state that we we received a few questions early this week. And I believe the team has done their best to assemble some written answers to those, which I think have been provided to you. So hopefully, that is of help. And if there are things that we are unable to answer as a team here this morning with you, certainly, we will provide updated answers as soon as possible for the committee to consider. So thank you very much.
Merci, Monsieur Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. So we have a few questions. Dear experts, do you have questions? Mister Laporte, can I ask my question in French? Because I would like to be as precise as possible. Yes, go ahead. I'm going to try to speak slowly. One of the points that struck me in your presentation is the components, which is dimethyldiazine. It's a compound that has been identified and detected and quantified by the first laboratory, PSN. And it was then not found by the other labs. So I've asked the question of the conditions and means that were implemented to be able to identify this compound. And I was very surprised myself that PSN mentioned this substance, because this compound has the same molecular weight as acetone. because this compound has the same molecular weight as acetone, which is a very typical solvent presence in packaging, in the environment, in many different materials. And when we look at the analysis carried out by the other labs, these labs find acetone among the volatile organic compounds. So I also had the same thoughts as the presenters, who thought that it was dubious that they found dimethyldiazine. And I thought myself that it was probably acetone rather than dimethyldiazine. And it was then confirmed by other labs. Nonetheless, identifying a compounds by mass spectrometry, this is also based on the chromatography. For those who don't know this technique, it's about separating different compounds in a mix, depending on their interaction with a stationary phase. And based on this, I thought it's not only mass spectrometry that matters, it's also the retention time. And I looked back at the data from PSN. What do I see in the table? PSN detects both dimethyldiazine and acetone. This means that probably, when PSN carried out their analysis, they detected two different substances with two different retention times, which of course, indeed have the same weight, but they don't have the same retention time. So the question I have, and the point I wanted to highlight is, we cannot, even if the mass spectrometry results are the same, we cannot conclude that this dimethyldiazine is acetone. We need to also look at the retention time. If we were to go back to the data from PSN, I would like to have the results for the Ion 58 of both substances.
Monsieur Cronin.
Mr. Cronin. Did you understand the question and the comments that were made?
I definitely understood the comments. And I think it's largely in alignment with what our internal assessment is, as well as the external assessments that we've seen. And I think it's a bit regrettable that this has been misidentified, that acetone has been misidentified. The specific question that was cut off at the end, there was a request for a specific designation of those compound identifications. But I didn't hear that. And that might be something that we need to follow up with, specifically from our toxicologist. I don't know if Jan or Denver heard those specifics and can comment otherwise.
I also didn't caught the specific of the second question, but I fully concur with the observation and the statements being made here, that dimethyldiazine and acetone were detected at two different methods, just to be clear, GCMS and LCMS. And that's also, I concur with the conclusion, including with the molecular weights and the unlikely hood of the presence of this compound. That is very unlikely that it was present in the first place. And we also did not have a positive confirmation by control measurement. So hence, the observation and the conclusions are fully in line with our current standing of dimethyldiazine. And that this compound is not a compound of concern, because it basically is not there.
Thank you. Just potentially, I understand that this can call into question the initial conclusions.
Either address, again, the last part of that question dropped off just slightly. So I want to make sure we get that information, the detailed information that's requested.
Yes, that's where, that's what I was about to say. Can you please give us the extra information? Can you please give this to our experts?
Okay, is it possible to restate the last part of that question?
Yes, of course, maybe in English, if you prefer. I would like to say that the compounds have been both identified by PSN, not only dimethyldiazine, but also acetone. That means that this laboratory has seen two different peaks in the chromatograms corresponding to three different compounds. Indeed, I agree with the fact that acetone was fully identified by different complementary techniques. I agree with that. And but in my opinion, it is not sufficient to remove totally the possibility of the existence of dimethyldiazine, because PSN also identified both acetone and dimethyldiazine, not only by the mass, the comparison of the mass spectra, but also based on the retention times. If they see two different compounds, that means that they saw two different peaks in the chromatograms. And I would like to say that it would be interesting for us to have at our disposal the extracted ion chromatogram corresponding to the Ion 58, corresponding to the mass of the two compounds. Okay, is it clear for you?
There we go. I'm sorry, we didn't hear any of that. I'm very sorry. Mr. Thomas, perhaps you can tell us the best way to proceed? If it would be possible to put this in writing, and we could, I'm sure, get you the answer immediately? Or if you want to spend...
Okay, we will send you by writing this specific question. Monsieur Garnier.
Mr. Garnier. I think that in order to understand the relevance and the meaning of the analyses that you've carried out, it would have been to have a precise description of the airflow in your different devices. Upon reading the reports, well, your presentation was a lot clearer than the reports that you provided previously, because we had questions regarding the number of references of the different devices that have been recalled. I didn't find this in your report. And you said this very clearly here, you explained this very clearly. So what would be interesting would be to know if the airflow is the same in these different devices. And to write the material used in each of the different parts of these air flows, and to have an idea of the components. You might not know this yourself, because maybe your suppliers won't provide you with these different compounds, components, because of business secrecy. But maybe we could obtain them ourselves and to maybe have a history of these materials, because I guess that you change suppliers sometimes, or they change the way in which they manufacture these parts, and that the components of the airflow parts might have changed over the years. So this information is important for us to understand where we need to look and to potentially detect aberrations. Because if there's no reason why there should be dimethyldiazine, it means that there is no dimethyldiazine. But it would be good to have this information in advance. Do you think you could obtain it?
Sure, absolutely. And we will work to get that information pre-utidary. I will say that the devices, the air path of the devices, there's different componentry. Generally, the shell and the structure of the device is a polypropylene. We have, there's what we call the blower, which generates the airflow. But then, within each device category, we have different configurations of foam that surrounds that. So foam is really an industry standard to reduce sound, the base sound in the devices. And the design choices, which date back for many, many years, we'll have to get back to you as to those design choices specifically. But we can provide you with the platform understanding of the engineering.
Madame Yagubi.
Mrs. Yagubi. Yes, good morning. On all the documents we've received, but also upon hearing you, you talk about polyurethane. Polyurethane is a family of materials. How can you be certain that you always obtain the same, the exact same material in this foam? I am asking you this because the polyurethane foam, depending on the type of polyurethane, it's not always the same composition, and the degradation process is not the same. And the profile of volatiles will thus be different as well. So how can you be certain that you always obtain the same polyurethane foam? And what type of polyurethane foam is it? Is it based on isothiocyanates? Is it based on polyester? Is it anaphatic? Is it... All of these elements are extremely important to determine the origin of these potential toxic components.
Understood. Well, I can say that, so it is the polyester foam, as we've described, and that is subject to our suppliers. We have controls in place to regulate this, but I can't speak specifically to your question of certainty, but we can work to provide you with that information in terms of how those suppliers are controlled and how we think about the potential for variability in manufacturing of that component within those controls. Perhaps I'll ask Jan if you have any either follow-up observations or anything to add to those considerations.
Yeah, maybe it's also good to add and also to build up on the previous question, also taking in consideration the other compounds, components in the air path, is that we, with our field-aged device testing, we do full device measurements. So by doing that and taking a worst-case kind of approach, based on the degradation, we take into consideration the variability which can occur, excuse me, in this manufacturing process. We have a good understanding by now what the material composition is of the polyester polyurethane foam, including the additives being used in the manufacturing process. And we take that into consideration in the assessments in a pristine situation. So what is the zero-hour emission of specific compounds? And how does it evolve over time? So what is the emission as a result of degradation of the foam itself? So the hydrolysis process, but also under the exacerbated kind of process when it's exposed to ozone. But we also see that ozoneolysis is exacerbating the degradation process of the foam. So we take all these different kinds of angles into consideration, assessing the risk and the harm at the patients.
Mr. Garnier, yes, I disagree with what's just been said. It's not about assessing risks. It's about assessing the exposure, so identifying the agents that are involved in the manufacturing process of these devices. And of course, the potential liberations of particles and of components of volatile organic compounds that she called volatile, but they're not all volatile. Some of them are semi-volatile. This is why in the reports that you've sent, there are a few points that are not very precise, and maybe you should remove them. To measure VOCs, we first take samples of air, which is what you've done. And then you try to look at what you obtained. But in the reports that I have looked at, there's only one report that gave you the disorption heat temperatures. Of course, the disorption depends on the temperature at which the material has been heated, the canister has been heated, or the filter that you've used for your samples. Because this is what is going to cause disorption. And the heaviest components are of course going to disorbed at higher temperatures. So the temperature of analyses changes from one test to another, you're not going to obtain the same results, of course, even if the material is the same. Not going to obtain the same results in terms of quality nor quantity. So these types of details, you need to correct this in your report. You measured... Most of your measurements have been made on new devices. These are the processes of measure of material that are very typical. It's done for furniture, and the way in which you process is the very conventional one. But some devices, there are points that we, that we're not sure that you took into consideration. We do not know if the devices were still in their packaging up until the time of the test. And if that's not the case, we do not know how long prior to the experiments they were unpacked. Because many of the VOCs that you find at first and whose concentration declines very quickly could very well be contamination from packaging. Because the VOCs that you find are very typical ones that can be found in many different materials of common use and that are present everywhere in indoor air. Most of the agents measured there in your tests, in the studies that you sent us, can also be measured in the indoor air here in this very room that we're in. And one of the elements that would have been interesting would have been to compare the concentrations in your airflow to the concentrations that are usually present in indoor air, because there are many developed countries that have carried out studies to know about the concentration of these volatile organic compounds in indoor air. And it's another way of assessing things, to show, well, yes, there's acetone, but it's at the same level as it is in your kitchen or your bedroom. So it's not about making people panicking because of an agent that could be found in equivalent levels anywhere in indoor air, everywhere in houses. As for foam, another thing that's bothered me in your process, you carry out artificial aging of foams, and you say that it's representative of actual aging, but you do not provide any proof of this. You consider that making foams age artificially through the process that you describe, it's equivalent to the natural aging of a device. It's not the case at all. And I was wondering why you didn't test all devices? You could get devices after one year of use, two years of use, three years of use, and carry out tests on these devices. Why didn't you choose to do that?
Yeah, so to start with the last question first, we are scaling up the testing, indeed, to the point of testing field devices. But also, please keep in mind that the access to these devices is limited, especially, as pointed out by Dr. Cronin, the actual degradation in the field is limited. So we are scaling up, as we receive more devices from the field now, we're scaling up those specific testing. We have already data on these devices, what's also shown by Dr. Cronin. And the reason why we did concurrent testing in the lab is because of abundance of the field degraded devices. And we're also working to find a plausible correlation between lab degraded foam as well as field degraded foam to get a good indication of the degradation mechanisms of the foam. To the question of how the tests are being carried out, I would like to refer that to my colleague Denver, Denver Fok, to explain the setup of these testing and how these tests are done at different kind of test locations.
Yeah, thank you, Jan, and thank you for the question. We, just to let you know, we have provided a detailed response to this specific question about the temperatures and how the testing is conducted. And we have delivered that response in a written format. But generally, so we conduct our ISO 18562 VOC testing at the worst-case clinical... at the worst-case clinical scenario conditions. So we standardize it at the highest possible environmental operating conditions, which is typically 35 to 40 degrees Celsius. We also conduct the testing at the lowest possible flow rate to generate the highest concentration of VOCs. So this air sample is collected and the quantity of VOCs is compared to established toxicological exposure standards, which kind of goes to your question about comparing it to what a patient would typically be exposed to in normal environmental conditions, such as, you know, we use occupational VOC standards that we assess to. So taking that all into consideration, we feel that, you know, we're looking at a worst-case possible clinical scenario, comparing that to toxicological exposure standards and generating margin of safety values. And in that calculation, the VOC tests that we've conducted have shown that there are no VOCs with unacceptable margin of safety value. Additionally, to your question about how we conduct testing on new devices and their packaging, so we take the device directly from its final finished packaging as a customer would see it. We take it out of that box and we put it into the testing chamber, again, to simulate worst-case VOC emissions that could be generated from that, the packaging. So for new pristine devices, we always test immediately after opening from the final finished packaging. For, you know, this is not the case for field return devices as they've already been opened. And so we have also, in our written response, provided you all of our manufacturing dates, our testing dates and our reporting dates for all of the key studies that you've asked about. And we're happy to share all of the information or testing details that you request. So hopefully that provides a little bit more insight into those questions you have.
Mrs. Yagubi, yes, good morning. I was wondering how you explain the fact that the components of the foam, which is supposed to be sound-abating, which is outside of the airflow? How do you, how can they end up in the airflow? I've not really understood the way it works. This is my question. How do you explain the fact that there are these VOCs coming from the foam, which is only there for sound-abatement purposes? So it is outside of the airflow? How do they end up in the airflow?
Yeah, so the design of the interior of the device is not airtight. So there's the possibility for VOCs to transfer from where the sound is located to the air path. So we have done extensive testing. We continue to do extensive testing to isolate VOCs that are generated from the sound-abatement foam versus those from other interior components of the device. We've done system-level testing with and without sound-abatement foam. So we're getting a better understanding of the ratios of the VOCs coming from the device that are from the sound-abatement foam.
Let me to build on that response. If I understand the question clearly, the foam is actually in the air path. So we can provide details of maybe more technical drawings on the design of the device. But in all the different platforms, the foam resides in the air path. So it is exposed to the airflow in the various devices.
And to my understanding, this is industry standard and this is seen across other devices.
Mrs. Yagubi? In light of your answer, I have another question. On this foam, which is meant to be in the airflow and this is why VOCs end up there as well. So this is linked to my previous question. What are the elements that can make you claim that this foam is a foam for medical use? If it ends up directly in the airflow connected to the patient, it is supposed to meet medical criteria. So when you talk about polyurethane, it means that you don't know which type of polyurethane you're using and you do not have the elements that allow you to prove that this is medically useful.
To make sure we understand, so the question is, how can we assure that, why is the decision to use this foam? And is it a medical-grade foam? Is that the question as stated?
Yes, yes. You can understand the question like that, yeah?
Yes.
So the question is, in fact, how did you choose this form, this polyurethane foam? Is it a medical-grade foam or not?
I had another question. On the test that you carried out, there are things that are not very clear. In your declaration of intentions, you tell us that you're going to carry out tests with and without humidifier. But when we read your tests, it sounds as though they've only been carried out without humidifier. So these are conditions that are quite different to the conditions of use. So I wanted to know if I had misunderstood, if there was information that I didn't manage to find and if you had been carrying out tests with and without humidifiers? Because it would make a difference in terms of the results of VOC measurements.
Jan, do you think that you might be able to answer that question?
Indeed, some of the measurements, especially for the field return for the field return to devices, some of them come with and some without a humidifier. And for completion, we do test both. At this moment, we have not seen any difference between devices with and without a humidifier from a VOC emission point of view.
So tell me if I've understood properly. You only show one result because the results were identical, whether you had used a humidifier or not. It's hard to believe that is so identical, systematically identical.
Yeah, so we report out the results we get from our labs. We have tested that several labs. These are the results we get back. We have analyzed it also together with our external experts. But we do see that, and this could be due to the fact that the internal air path beyond the foam has limited contribution to the addition or to the emission of VOCs. So if you would make a perito of VOCs as a function of the different air path components, then the humidifier indeed has a limited contribution.
One last question, Mr. Yagubi. You can ask your question again, please. Very well. So let me restate my question. You explained that the polyurethane foam was directly in contact with the airflow and thus directly linked to the patient. So my question was the following. How can you be sure that this foam is medical-grade foam? Because it is in connection with the client, in touch with the client. So it has to answer medical characteristics. You talk about polyurethane. You do not specify the type of polyurethane that you use. And I thus guess that you do not have knowledge regarding the medical characteristics of your foam.
Yeah, so it's good to know that these components, they were qualified for our supply controls and the information and the testing information we had available at that time. And the fact that we are here at this moment is, yeah, we learned it the hard way and that there is risk related to this foam. And it also led to accidents, which resulted in this field safety notification. So indeed, based on the progressing insights, the process controls insights also evolved over time.
Just to add to that, Jan, in the initial design and the initial biocompatibility evaluation of these devices, the materials inside the device were analyzed via the 10993 ISO standard. And there was air quality testing that was conducted on a system level before the ISO 18562 standard was developed. So there was a significant analysis of the materials, of the composition within the device in terms of their safety profile and their biocompatibility. So it was, I think, at the time, an unexpected defect that occurred in the breakdown of the material that was not considered in the analysis.
Thank you. Just maybe one quick point. Pascal, go ahead, a technical point on the degradation. We have a question from Mr. Garnier ahead of your audition, your hearing. We wanted to know if you had the data of medical material vigilance and had you detected something specific regarding the degradation of the foam linked to the aging of these medical devices? In other words, does the foam degrade more starting from a certain age? Did I formulate your word, your question right?
I'll take that question. The trend analysis as part of the root cause investigation of this highlighted the process of hydrolysis as the key chemical process leading to degradation. Hydrolysis, as we all know, is a time-dependent chemical reaction. So at least theoretically, we could appreciate and understand that the more time that has passed, the more likely foam is to degrade. So that is somewhat supported by the trend analysis. However, we were not able to define strictly within that trend analysis a specific time point whereby we could assure that hydrolysis had not occurred or that it begins to occur. So there is that component to it. The, and then also, as we've discussed, the ozone consideration where we're used will accelerate that process. So it is time-dependent, but it's also variable to a certain degree.
Very well. So thank you, Mr. Cronin and your collaborators for taking part as representatives of Philip Respiratory to this expert committee. I think that we are going to write down a few questions to then send them to you, technical questions, the ones that have been asked and maybe a few others, so as to obtain all the information necessary to be able to make progress in our analysis. I understand that you had ongoing tests. So in a rather short amount of time, you might publish something? You might update the information available? Am I right?
Correct. It is a certain priority of ours to communicate in a timely fashion as best we can once we have this full risk assessment and analysis done. And so I would anticipate that, as has been claimed by the end of the month. However, these tests are ongoing and rolling. So we will continue to have updates as the data becomes available, so.
Thank you very much. I know that you had to get up early to be with us today. So thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just that we take a short break. We are really behind schedule, so a short five-minute break and we can resume at 11:35. Very well. So let's resume our committee. So we will now start a series of three hearings from three learned societies. First, I will yield the floor to Professor Jesus Gonzalez from the French Society of Respiratory Medicine. Thank you, Professor, for introducing us to start with and then for giving us your presentation. Thank you for having me. The respiratory community is highly mobilized with such alerts. This is not the only one. We had to overcome the lack of equipment during the COVID crisis. We're to overcome other equipment alerts. I wish to underline this because behind this presentation, I am not the only one. There is the whole respiratory medicine community. I've received the latest O2 capter alert by Philips. So we are highly mobilized. And my presentation doesn't have a lot of content, but it shows that we will have to fill the gaps with such meetings. My name is Professor Jesus Gonzalez. I'm a lung specialist. I have been working on ventilation devices for years since the 1990s. I am in charge of the National Degree at the Sorbonne University. And I am also in charge of of the SPLF, of the GAF2 group of the SPLF, the Oxygen and Ventilation Assistant Group. I am commissioned by the SPLF, the French Society of Respiratory Medicine. And I am the vice president of the SPLF. And that is important to notice it. Potential interest links. Ever since I started my career, I've been fighting against any defaulting equipment used at home. And sometimes we are being heard, sometimes we are not. But this is our work that we have to carry out with manufacturers. There are some conflicts of interest. There are some conflicts of interest that I wanted to underline. But I work with all manufacturers, there are no exceptions. I am not employed by any manufacturers. I simply give advice. For example, Breyers, Levinstein, Air Liquide. I haven't been in touch with ResMed in the past two years and I was part of different training courses. Do not believe me 100% because there are a few conflicts of interest. Let me present you the risks. I am pointing out the text that we, that the ANSM and myself had drafted together. There are two types of risks in this case. A risk of exposure to volatile organic compounds, COV, dioxin, diamethyl and phenol, 2.6 bis diamethyl and methylpropyl, and a risk of exposure to particulates. And let's start with the second risk. This is risk number one on the slide. But that is the perfect slide. So in case of an exposure to particulates of degraded foam, the potential risks are irritation, inflammation, headaches, asthma, adverse effects on other organs. To date, we have tried to analyze all the foams on the left-hand side. You can see a picture with a foam quite different from the foam that you can find with other manufacturers. And as you can see, when it is brittle, brittly and freeable, so the choice in the type of foam was important. So this is a brittle type of foam. And what struck us is that this foam, that the air goes through this foam, so it will be soundproofing, but the air will go through the foam. Philips informed us that there were constraints because of potential debris. What information do we have to say that these fine particles can deteriorate and generate clinical symptoms? At first, we only have suppositions, assumptions. And the only data from the literature I can give you is part of two studies that you might have heard of today, the study by Dr. Palm, Swedish database. I was in touch with Dr. Palm. And he mentioned the puff CPAP, so only Philips devices. So only CPAP devices are mentioned here. Luckily, you will hear about this with Professor Guignard. But unfortunately, there were no data on ventilation device. And this gives us an overview on the potential irritation risk. What other data do we have in this database? It is said that patients exposed to ventilation systems with degraded foam were using more BPCO treatments. That's all. So then concluding that particles are more irritating to bronchies is a bit exaggerated. But the important message to convey and keep in mind is that there were areas in this study where there are many more smokers in Sweden in poorer areas. So there is a huge bias in this study, which enabled them to say that the the overrate of death was linked to this higher number of smokers. So when it comes to the first risk of irritation by mechanical particles, we do not have any data except for assumptions, so no scientific data. So we didn't have the means to conclude that it is irritating or not. But of course, we know that this foam should not be inhaled. When we come to the most important risk, and for a good reason, we do not believe in this risk much. But as you know, the respiratory community is very aware of the carcinogenic risks that happen with inhaled compounds like diesel or tobacco. So why do we say there might be a carcinogenic risk with this foam? Because chemical particles that were found in the degradation process of the foam are classified by the CIRK, the International Agency on Research on Cancer. And there are four categories for the particles. Category number one, carcinogenic for men, asbestos, ethanol, alcohol, estrogen, silicium and tobacco. So as doctors, we fight against these particles of the number one category. For category, the category 2A, these molecules are likely to be carcinogenic for men. For example, nitrates are used in agriculture, lead, burning mate, traditional Argentinian drink, UVA, B and C, and everyone knows that. And then you enter other categories. The category we're interested in today is category 2B. And it states that these particles, because of the mutagenesis, which generate genetic gene mutations, are possibly carcinogenic for men. So you might have recognized the emeticone danger on those products. So the carcinogenic risk is considered very low by the respiratory community. And I would like to repeat that we are highly aware of the carcinogenic risk that can be generated from inhaled particles. But we are not too worried today. When it comes to the level of concern, we are much less concerned than we were because of these two studies. First, the database I mentioned earlier, the Swedish one, and another one, an article published in the American Journal of Respiratory and Critical Care Medicine. Those two studies have used a huge database comparing different branded devices. And both studies show that there is no increased risk of cancer. But for this American article, I haven't received an answer from the author. So so far, we still have some scientific data and they are quite reassuring, although we need more. So I think we can be, we can move on quietly because it doesn't seem that there is an increased risk of cancer. To continue on the recommendations for replacement, we said that it was important to replace these devices in light of those two risks. There was a medical and scientific recommendation. The risk to stop using the machine outweighed the replacement. To date, I have carried out an investigation with my colleagues. There doesn't seem to be technical constraints, except that a ventilation device is different from a CPAP device. So there will be some adjustments to be made. So some settings will have to be adjusted. We cannot just copy paste the same process. And for those who use Trilogy with children, parents said they didn't want to change it. They trust the device, so we are expecting alternatives. So the Trilogy devices by Philips are quite safe for children. So when we compare the risks and benefits, people do not want to change them. So these replacements are occurring slowly, not because we don't have enough devices, but because this is a long process and also because the level of concern is not as high. And also because of the adjustments I have mentioned. So from a, but from a logistical point of view, it is not that complex. And there is one thing for sure. Dr. Rabec and my team have carried out collaborative work, which showed that if we add filters on the output of the ventilation device, you amend the filtering quality of the device. Frédéric Gagné might mention it later. But adding a filter also amends the settings. So this is a strong conclusion that made us change our recommendation. To conclude, if we were as a respiratory community to make a recommendation, we thought this through. We are not envisaging any other scientific solution than than having database, scientific database that you monitor over the long term. I think this is the only methodology that will allow us to get tangible results over time. When a study is controlled, you increase the risk of fake results because there are too many consultations of intermediate results. So in the respiratory community, along with other stakeholders, our work is to disseminate our database. We have a national database on ventilation. Not all the information is part of it. It's a matter of funding. So we'd like to merge the national database of ventilation of 1,500 patients and the social security database. A prospective study, in our opinion, doesn't look feasible because it won't bring us more accurate answers and it will be much longer to carry out and to get intermediate results. Because the whole process of designing this study without any intermediate results would mean several years, more than five years. And we would also need experts that take years to be hired. So a prospective study would, is not our recommendation because it wouldn't bring fast answers to our patients. So we should consolidate current databases, in our opinion. Thank you, Professor. Do you have any questions, Mr. Mazanze? Yann Mazanze for France en Santé.
I have a remark and a question regarding the information provided to the patients when it comes to the carcinogenic risk. You said there was a potential, possible risk. So I have a remark. When it comes to the information provided to patients, we all understand that people are rushing online to get information. But information is not, doesn't seem to be consistent. On your website, you disseminate the ANSM opinion. But you don't mention this carcinogenic risk. And then your website sends people to the ANSM website where the carcinogenic risk is mentioned. So there are contradictory information, which doesn't make your information trustworthy. And when a risk is identified, patients should be informed. So when it comes to communication towards patients, we have some concerns. So my question is the following: Are you scared people might panic? The health authorities have decided to mention this risk. And they've decided to communicate on it. So what is your opinion on this? Are you scared that patients might be panicked?
No, there are two levels of risk. And the role of a learned society is to interpret raw data related to a theoretical risk, a theoretical chemical risk, and then interpret it, filter the information. We should have gone beyond and updated it. And we should have said that the respiratory community is not concerned when it comes to the carcinogenic risk. Yes, this is our role as doctors to analyze the literature. And beyond the chemical risk, what you're asking for is the chemical risk and this is what has been mentioned by the ANSM. And as you said, we have to be transparent. But as a learned society, we have to filter data and disseminate digested data. And we can even go beyond. And after analyzing literature data and with the theoretical information that we have, the information is the one I have provided. Mrs. Fournier? Yes, we have epidemiological studies right now. You find them reassuring. However, they've got certain limitations in terms of methods and design. So as an epidemiologist, they are bringing us limited information. Of course, they are not scary, but I wouldn't say they are reassuring because of those limitations. Yes, you are totally right. The Palm study, so the Swedish study, is not worrisome. But what it also shows is that the chronic obstructive pulmonary disease patients were smokers, for most of them. So I think you've summed it up. So I think those studies appease some patients, but they are not totally reassuring. I agree with that. But this study was undertaken in a swift fashion with short notice. So the two Canadian and Swedish studies and their authors will be part of the hearing series this afternoon. We have a question by Mr. Garnier. To go back to the carcinogenic risk, as it is mentioned by the ANSM, is communicated on by Respiratory, Philips.
And the message is clear. We talked about it this morning. Methylyazene isn't present, probably. And the assessment of the carcinogenic risk of this compound was only a fantasy of a toxicologist paid by Philips because there is no published data on this agent. So they did a Red Cross. So they considered that one substance that was supposedly close but very different because it is oxidized. And so this compound, which is carcinogenic, carcinogenic, and should be part of the category 2B. And they considered that methylyazene was the same as this substance, but that is not the case. And for the substituted phenol, there are no toxicological data on this. So they've extrapolated the data from another toxicology, toxicology study. So in my comments to the ANSM, I mentioned it. What we should demand from industrials is to get clear information on what is part of the fitting sold and what is emitted by those devices. And this is not what industrials are doing right now. Assessing risks is not part of the role of industrials. It requires making decisions for baseline studies, making decisions when it comes to extrapolating data for a certain range of doses, for lower doses, or uncertainty factors. And this can be influenced by one individual's opinion when you are being paid by an industrial player. Of course, the decisions that you will make will not be as fair from a toxicological point of view. I don't think this is the role of industrials to carry out a risk assessment. They have to be transparent when it comes to the emissions of their devices, when it comes to material vigilance. The people will characterize dangerous risks and qualify critical risks. And offer toxicological values, taking into account uncertainty factors. This is the job, the remit of independent assessors, for example, health authorities. Thank you for your comment. I approve it totally. This is what I said without your expertise. And then on top of those layers, there is also the analysis of clinical data with, including the limitations. So that is why the respiratory community decided to give an opinion. And I think you're right. I think we should maybe give a more, a firmer opinion and adjudicate on this. Thank you, professor. One question from Professor Loyer. Jesus Christ of Talking. You can add to the complexity of this problem that there seems to be a link between the fact that you're suffering from sleep apnea and a higher incidence of cancer. This is something that should be studied. And the question that remains is that people who suffer from sleep apnea and who are under positive pressure, shouldn't they have, don't they have a lower risk of getting an incident cancer? So this is an ongoing question, but a crucial question. I will leave my epidemiologist colleague to answer to that. But this is additional data that we have on a positive pressure within this context. Thank you very much. Let's now stop this hearing, put an end to this hearing. Thank you very much, professor. Let's now turn to our next hearing. Professor Gagnier-Du, a member of the French Society of Sleep Research and Medicine, SFRMS. Thank you, professor, for being with us. Please introduce yourself better and you can give us your presentation. Can you hear me well? Yes, we can hear you perfectly. Great. My name is Frédéric Gagnier-Du. I am a long specialist, the head of the CHU in Angers and a member of the SFRMS, SPLF as well, and former president of the SPLF. So let me show you my conflict of interest, especially with the medical device industry and especially Philips Respironics. So I want to show you data that deals with the sleep cohort in the Pays de la Loire. It was put in place in 2007. It includes nine centers in the Pays de la Loire region, CHU, CHG, and independent centers. There were 15,000 patients between 2007 and 2018, adult patients that are referred in one of those centers for suffering from sleep apnea. And we also had anthropomorphic and socioeconomic polyseminographic data, comorbidities, question forms. And in 2017, we received a progressive equipment for 12,000 of those patients. We have full access to their social security data. So data from the SNS, the French healthcare database. So let me show you three works that we carried out on the risk of cancer when it comes to sleep apnea. First work we carried out, we studied the relationship between sleep apnea, their severity, and the incidence of cancer regardless of the treatment. This study included 11,218 patients, followed for six years. And the emergence of cancer incidence was detected by the SNS using an algorithm approved by us. On the left-hand side, you have the characteristics of this cohort. This is quite a typical one for patients suffering from sleep apnea. The majority are men, obese men with frequent comorbidity, high blood pressure, 34% of patients with diabetes, cardiovascular disease. And you also have the social and economic characteristics. And this study showed that on the indicators that we can get from sleep data, when you are under 90% of saturation and regardless of the confusion factors, over 30% of the times, you have more than 30% risk of cancer after adjustments of confounding factors. So we were talking about all cancer incidents. Then we looked at the four main, four most frequent cancers. As you can see here, the only cancer independently associated to nighttime hypodoxia is lung cancer. One of our assumptions is that the co-exposure of the lung to hypoxia and tobacco could favor the emergence of lung cancer. To add to what Christopher Loyer said earlier, we asked the following question. When patients were receiving CPAP treatment, was there an incidence on cancer? So in our cohort, we used the patients to whom we had prescribed CPAP treatment, 4,500 patients. We followed them on a median of 5.4 years. It accounts for 10% of our population, so that is. Then we divided the population into two groups. A group of patients considered as adequately treated with an average of over four hours and a median of seven hours. And a group of patients that we consider as insufficiently treated, their observance is less than four hours and the median at three hours. That's about 40% of our population. We use the statistical method that is innovative. And we use the statistical method to better address the confounding factors. This study showed the absence of differences between patients adequately treated and patients insufficiently treated when you look at all, all cancer types. The only signal that we have here, when you look at subtype of cancer, like prostate, lung and breast cancer, only the lung cancer shows a trend to diminish the risk with adequately treated patients, but this is not significant either. And also, let's remain cautious because the number of incident case was much lower. And then we reached today's question. The cancer risk in adherent users using a Philips device. So we used the same cohort of patients. And this time, we divided patients not depending on their adherence to the treatment, but depending on the device they were using. So we have an identical population, 400, 4,500 patients. And in this population, 30% of people were using Philips, 1648 Philips devices. And the rest were using non-Philips devices. And they are part of the non-Philips Respironics device group, the non-PR group. So different groups on gender, the prevalence of diabetes. There are differences in adherence. People with a Philips device were more adherent, a median 6.6 hours per night. When you look at the percentage of patients adherent to the treatment over four hours, it was quite, it was a large proportion of the patients. So a higher number of hours used per day with Philips devices. But the monitoring period was a bit lower, 6.7 years against 7.5 years for patients with non-Philips devices. So a median follow-up period of a little over seven years. For cancer incidence, the difference is not significant when you compare both groups. When, no matter if you consider all cancer types, all, all cancers, or most frequent cancers separately. Here we look at the multi varied statistical model. It was a Cox analysis. And what's interesting is in green, the fact of having a Philips device is not associated to an increased risk of cancer. And as you can see, the adjusted HR is at 0.91. We first considered patients who were adherent over six hours to see if over-exposed patients were running a higher risk. 2,150 patients, 235 incident cancers, and no significant difference. Then we looked at patients with a higher median follow-ups, so that is over seven years, 2,222 patients, 304 cancers. So no significant differences once again. And then we focused on lung cancer, where the signal was a little bit higher, as shown before. And of course, we need to remain cautious because once again, the number of cases was lower, but we did not observe any increased risk of lung cancer on our population. So to conclude, within the cohorts of sleep in the Pays de la Loire, over a third of patients using a CPAP Philips device do not show an increased risk of cancer, which is in accordance with the Canadian study that will be presented later on today. Thank you for your attention. Thank you, professor. Are there any questions? Mrs. Fournier? Thank you for your presentation. I have a whole series of questions. Your research has been published as a letter to the editor, so a lot of details are lacking to understand the scope and methodology. So I have a series of questions for you. First, you mentioned a follow-up, a medium follow-up of seven years. When did this follow-up start? At the time of the diagnosis of sleep apnea? Or when the fitting was used for the first time? So the follow-up duration starts when the treatment is prescribed, which coincides in France a few days, with a few days after the diagnosis was made. So it starts when the treatment starts. Thank you very much for this answer. You have also mentioned former publications. So I did not understand why the follow-up period was different in this current study compared to the other study on adherence. Because you're studying the same cohort and same starting and ending date. And on your study on Philips devices, the follow-up period is of seven years. In the previous study, we were at five years. Yes, what's happening is that because time goes by, when it was published in the Respiratory Journal, we started analyzing data a year and a half ago or two years ago. It takes time to analyze data, draft the paper, revise the paper. And automatically, the duration of the follow-up period increased. So it's just the time between the moment we analyzed the data for the previous study and the moment when we published this study. To add to what you said, it was published as a newsletter. We used the format of the two previous studies because this is a secondary analysis of the cohort that was already published. So this was a format that was well known. So the follow-up is a little longer right now. Yes, it is. But the, the date at the end of the study remains the same and the number of patients remains the same and the number of cancers remains exactly the same, which sounds surprising. Yes, it does. And I do not have any other answer to give you. To me, this is due to the fact that time has passed between the two studies and that is why the follow-up period is longer. I think that you should check your figures. I also wanted to know how you measured the adherence to the treatment. In our population, patients are being monitored up until the end of the follow-up period. So we see them every six months or the supplier sees them every six months. And every time there is an adherence measure, we take the average of the adherence calculated every six months. So over the follow-up period between the beginning of the treatment and the occurrence of an event or the death or the end of the follow up period. So you categorized patients depending on the adherence that you observe at the end of the follow up period. We categorized patients depending on the average adherence during the follow up period. So you consider that this is valid right from the start of the follow up period, right? I'm not sure I understand your question. For example, a patient will be followed for two or three years. And he will have two or three measures and we make the average. So, which means that he can be very adherent at the beginning of the treatment and not at the end. And you will, you will consider that he was averagely adherent. In the former paper we published, this is a remark that was made. On the effect of the adherence to the treatments. We had made up a model looking at the adherence over time. What you need to know what's characteristics with this disease is that in the first few months are very decisive. And when a patient is adherent, the adherence won't change after three or four years. Patients that are not much adherent will stop treating themselves right from the start. But if they are adherent, they will remain adherent. But of course, this is, we are only making an estimate. But yes, you should check those figures. Yes, we can do that. And I have another question. But I have forgotten it, I have to say. Your database looks quite interesting because you managed to measure over time at different points in time, the adherence of patients. That is the number of hours of the device being used per night. So I think this should be the opportunity for you to carry out a study depending on the cumulative number of hours of the device used. Because the risk of cancer can increase with a cumulative number of hours. So we would like to see that when only a hundred hours have been accumulated. And when you compare it to thousands of hours, that will be interesting. This is an advantage that we have compared to the Canadian study. The population and the methodology is quite the same. But we don't know whether or not patients are treated. Whereas in France, suppliers inform us that they monitor patients and make home visits. This is a valid remark. And this is why we also took into account a longer period of follow up. That we could try to calculate cumulative number of hours with the adherence. But I don't think it would change the outcome much. Because there are no signals emerging. Yes, it could change the facts because the average effect that you have is on people that have only been using the device recently. So and when you're doing this, you're diluting the information. And it doesn't show when the increased risk will emerge. And you don't imagine that there will be an increased risk of cancer on someone that only started such a treatment one or two years ago. So you need to put yourself in the situation, in the following situation. So for example, looking after five years to see whether or not there is a higher incidence of cancer. Yes, I agree with you, but that's what I mentioned earlier. This is why we made two subgroups. One with over seven years of treatment, but there are fewer of them. That's half of the population. And even with patients with over seven years of exposure. There are no effects, no increased risk. But the duration of follow up is not constant over time. People with seven years of use are going through different periods. So having an average is not the right way to do things from a methodological point of view. Because there are different steps of follow up, one, two, three years. And then you should start looking at what happens from five years and seven years. Good afternoon. I have an additional question. You've identified four cancers using the SNS data, the French healthcare database. So have you used algorithms that have been approved? Did you manage to compare your cancer estimates with this data and other data sources? Especially because in your work, we can see that this is a large size cohort. But the number of cancers isn't that high luckily. They could be subject to variations depending on the quality of the algorithms used to detect cancer. As I said in my presentation. The remark that you're making is biased inherent to the national database we use. The algorithm was developed by INCA and it was improved by INCA. I don't know how it's been validated. But we base ourselves on this algorithm that was described and developed by INCA to extract incident cancers. We are hoping that it was externally validated because we published it in three different journals. High level respiratory medicine journals. But of course, we cannot exclude certain degree of over or underestimates estimations. Because we do not have a register with a clinical validation for each patient with a cancer. But in this area, the SNS data is quite broadly used. So we considered that this algorithm was validated. No, I totally agree with you, but it's great to hear that it's been validated by INCA. I have another question. Regarding the potential confounding factors, especially the use of tobacco and the mass, body mass index. You said that people using Philips device were more adherent. So maybe there are differentiating factors depending on other characteristics. Especially those confounding factors. Do you have more information on this? Yes, I was quite brief because I wanted to be brief. But there were no significant difference between the Philips and non Philips patients. This information was used on baseline. We don't have a follow up on the tobacco use in this cohort. So we cannot affirm that there is no difference in the evolution of tobacco use. But when we included them, there were no significant difference. And this information is provided when they enter the study. Yes, when they enter the study, they receive a question form in which they enter their social, economic data, their comorbidities, alcohol and tobacco consumption. But the main differences in the two population groups are more related to gender. And there's also a difference in diabetes. But not for diabetes, not for alcohol, not for tobacco when we included them in the cohort. And taking into account your expertise, what do you think the next studies will be? And you've been, you have a prospective NEOSAS study ongoing. So this is something that is being undertaken in a different context. We have patients with a new, recently diagnosed lung cancer. And we're trying to see whether whether patients with a new lung cancer but already suffering from sleep apnea had relapse chance. To answer today's question. I think we will continue to follow patients and see whether or not new things emerge over time. But I'm hoping that people using Philips devices won't be using those in the next few years. So this is the first thing we can do. We are aware of the potential limitations related to the number of cases and the incidence of cancers that is not very high. And then we'll have six or seven thousand patient data. And the more patients data we will have, the more reassuring our message will be. But our cohort, just like the Canadian cohort, brings a signal that we should consider reassuring. But we wish to do now. Because our paper was published by our Swedish colleagues, not on cancer but on the potential impact of exposure to Philips devices for chronic obstructive pulmonary diseases. We still haven't looked at them, but we want to focus on those. To answer the second question, we needed to look for more information within the database. And we wanted to bring an answer in a swift fashion for the incidence of cancer. But the exposure to this decomposed foam, there might be potential risk for chronic obstructive pulmonary diseases. Very well. To get back to what Professor Gonzalez says earlier. For now, the carcinogenic risk has not been proven. He was, he sounded really reassuring. Can we consider after your presentation that you share the same opinion? And is that the opinion of the SFRMS that you represent? Yes, the only data that we have at our disposal all show that there is no increased risk of cancer. We do not have any clinical signs enabling us to confirm that patients with a Philips ventilation device are running a higher risk to have a cancer. But of course, we should continue working on this question. And this is my position and this is the position of the SRF R M S. Very well, thank you for your time. Sorry, we ran a bit late. Thank you for taking part in this committee and enjoy the rest of your day. Goodbye. Let's now have our last hearing for this morning. Dr. Bruno Stac, can you hear us? Yes, can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you very well. Thank you. Thank you for being with us. You are the president of the National Association of the Respiratory System. Please introduce yourself in a more comprehensive way and then you have the floor. Thank you for inviting me to this committee. I'm the president of the National Association of the Respiratory System. And it represents independent lung specialists. And I would like to underline how important this is because many lung specialists prescribe the use of these machines, these devices. I am also the vice secretary of our professional union. And which is represented by the SPLF. And I am the president of the URPS, the Regional Union of Independent Lung Specialists, independent doctors in my region. Half of lung specialists work in hospitals and the other half are independent. And we can estimate that there are about six hundred prescribers of CPAP devices among independent lung specialists. When we look at figures of polygraphics. As you know, we can make diagnosis of sleep apnea with polysomnio and polygraphics. Over six hundred and thirty five thousand polygraphic exams were carried out. And in polysomnography, we are at around a hundred and twenty thousand exams. Or independent lung specialists. So that represents about two thirds for lung specialists. So we are huge prescribers of those machines. And as a representative, I have to inform patients and communicate on those devices when it comes to sleep apnea. And this is why I am, I was invited to be part of this committee. In June twenty twenty one, when there was the first alert. I alerted all lung specialists. And from February twenty twenty two, during the second wave of alerts. There was a press release to lung specialists so that they could reassure their patients in relations with their suppliers and with everything that has been done by the ANSM. And I was also in touch with a lawyer to see what the instructions were for lung specialists and how they could, they should communicate on this in a transparent fashion. And I will continue to do so. We are not as scientific, but in spite of this, we can participate. Professor Gagnier do and Professor Gonzalez know it well. We can participate in studies if new studies are to be carried out. Within the Federation, we also have an independent platform. It doesn't have a scientific purpose, but it aims to follow all our patients. If you can show my presentation. So in this platform that was born in twenty thirteen. We follow patients treated by CPAP, so with a ventilation device. And thanks to tele monitoring, prescribers have access to this platform and so do patients. This doesn't have a scientific purpose, only a monitoring purpose. In twenty thirteen, only three hundred and ninety seven patients were followed. And we are over three hundred thousand now. And we are dealing with treated patients here. Here, when devices are indicated on this platform. You can see very well that from twenty twenty one, the number of Philips devices reduced in terms of prescriptions. And here, when we focus on devices installed month after month. From the health alert, the number of Philips devices used, there is a decline. When we look at this development. Philips devices have recorded a decline. There is a slight difference between installed CPAP and declared CPAP, but we don't know really why. And the number of prescription for these devices is still quite high. And this can, and this is an issue because we need to replace former machines and we still need to continue treating patients. Here, on the right hand side, you have figures from 2021. And you can see that the breakdown of the branded, the brands being prescribed. You can see that Philips accounts for 90% on our platform. The rest is broken down with other brands. And there's a 4% decline between June 2021 and February 2022 in the number of prescriptions. So there is an impact in terms of prescription. This platform enables us to follow our patients in a regular fashion. And what we can have is adherence. We have the residual indexes. And we can have other information like cycles of volumes. And we can have data on therapies. So how long the patient has been using the device? What is the supplier that comes to their home? And we have the exact adherence in a daily fashion. And with comprehensive data provided. There's also a sleep observatory that is related to this platform. So we are following patients with medical data this time. And it belongs to the French Federation of Respiratory Medicine. And then this data can be, cannot be associated with cancer data, for instance. I am here to inform independent lung specialists and the community, the respiratory community. All those systems of telemonitoring and platforms have only been implemented recently. So it's hard to look at retrospective data. Thank you, doctor. Do you have any questions, Mr. Mazan? For France Enfo Santé, I have a question regarding prescription of new Philips devices. In your presentation, the analysis is a bit long in terms of duration. You said that Philips devices keep on being prescribed, if I'm not mistaken. Do you have detailed information since February 2022? Yes, we could send this over. Yes, this is, this would be interesting because this is when the health decision was made by the ANSM. And it was stated that Philips was supposed to keep devices for their replacement. Yes, indeed. What you can see on the graph is that the number of existing devices is declining. But we could give you the figures of the new patients being treated with a Philips device. Because this is data that is required when they enter the protocol. Yes, if you could send this information over to us because that is quite important. Are there any other questions? I have a question. What is your perception of the risk after being in touch with patients and independent practitioners? So the feedback that we received from patients when it comes to risks, I did not get any feedback from an independent lung specialist who said that I feel a patient has now cancer. But this is only field experience. This is not scientific data. As I said in my press releases, we are following everything that was, that was stated by the Respiratory Medicine Federation. But we don't really have a feedback when it comes to the risk of cancer. So we are being very reassuring to our patients. There was an episode of panic, of anxiety in January, February 2022. But we've, we've received some feedback regarding irritations. But this is not a scientific conclusion. But no lung specialist complained about anything else. Thank you very much. Any more questions? Thank you very much, doctor. We will now put an end to your hearing. Thank you for being with us and sorry for being late. I hope that thanks to my hearing, you have saved some time. Enjoy the rest of your day. Let's now take a break for lunch. Let's resume at 2:00 PM sharp with a hearing of the FDA Food and Drug Administration in the United States. So let's resume at 10:00 to 2:00. See you later. Good afternoon. Let's resume our temporary scientific committee organized by the ANSM on Philips Respiratory Medical Devices affected by the recall of June 2021. We will now hear the Food and Drug Administration, the American Health Authority that takes care of medical devices. And I would like to warmly thank the FDA for being here today. It is always interesting to share information regarding the situation in the United States, but also the assessment of the risk if possible and the recommendations made to the patients by the FDA. So welcome to James Lee. Thank you for being with us today. You are the head of the division in charge of sleep disorders, respiratory and anesthetics. I will let you introduce yourself more accurately because I'm sure you will do this much better than me. You have the floor for your presentation. We will be in charge of moving the slides. So please introduce yourself and then we will move on to your presentation.
Thank you, ANSM. It's very nice to be here. Thank you for the invitation. And yes, I am the director for Sleep Disorder Breathing Respiratory and Anesthesia Devices here at FDA. Thank you. And you could start on slide one. Thank you. I do apologize. The video is a little bit spotty at my house today. So I'm going to turn off video while I go through my slides. So good afternoon. My name is James Lee and I'm from the US FDA Center for Devices in Radiological Health. I'm the director, the Division of Sleep Disorder Breathing Respiratory and Anesthesia Devices here in OPEC Office of Health Technology One. I would like to thank ANSM for the invitation and the opportunity to speak to you today. Next slide, please. I'm here to speak about the recall from Philips that involves a wide variety of devices, generally known as CPAPs and BiPAPs, continuous and bi-level positive airway pressure devices and ventilators. Philips Respiratory initiated a voluntary recall of certain devices manufactured between 2009 and 2021 that provide respiratory support due to a potential health risk they identified involving a polyester polyurethane foam. This P E P U R foam used in these devices served as what is known as sound abatement foam. Generally, sound abatement materials are a design element commonly used in mechanical ventilators. And it is a design consideration under the standards for which these devices are developed. In this case of the P E P U R foam, Philips identified that these foams were degrading and breaking down over time. If these foams break down, the nature of the materials may create debris such as small black pieces. And they may or may not be visible to the patient and cause a risk to health. Following the recall, the FDA has worked closely with different patient groups and healthcare professional organizations to increase communications and obtain feedback regarding any concerns from these groups. These groups included the American Sleep Apnea Association, COPD Foundation, Muscular Dystrophy Association, Men in Hearts, and the American Academy of Sleep Medicine. The feedback received was valuable to help inform the FDA's communications about the recall and our recommendations to patients in our safety notices. Next slide, please. This polyurethane foam is used in the housing of these recalled ventilators, CPAPs and BiPAPs. It is a design feature to lessen the vibration and reduce noise of the device. However, the polyester polyurethane foam in this recall has been found to be vulnerable to breakdown that may result in the release of certain volatile organic compounds and particulating debris that could cause injury or permanent impairment and subsequently require medical treatment. Particulating debris results when polyester polyurethane foam breaks down or degrades. And then the so-called degradation products could present as small black pieces and enter the device air tubing known as the device gas pathway. In general, ventilators like these in the recall use blowers to deliver breathing gases to the patients. And these air passages that the patients go through, get to, is it through an interface? And what this all is known, what is known as the gas pathway of the device. Once these small pieces enter the ventilator's gas pathway, they may or may not be visible and could be inhaled or swallowed by the patient using a CPAP, BiPAP, or ventilator. In addition, in all these devices, some chemicals like volatile organic compounds or VOCs may also enter the gas pathway and be inhaled by the user. Generally speaking, it is worth mentioning here that the FDA considers issues regarding output gas quality and issue of biocompatibility. Meaning that since the lung is a terminal organ where a ventilator, CPAP or BiPAP, would be directing positive airway pressure toward, any particulates, particles, or chemicals could potentially reach the patient's airway and lung tissue. FDA has worked with the ISO, the International Organization for Standardization, and many stakeholders to standardize evaluation of gas quality for all ventilators, including the CPAPs and BiPAPs, and have recognized numerous methodologies to characterize ventilator biocompatibility. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we at the FDA are tracking very closely the impact of the recall devices. To be clear, medical device user reports, or MDRs, are required to be submitted by a manufacturer such as Philips to the FDA. The reporting is required when information they are collecting through complaints and such suggests that a device could have caused or contributed to a death or a serious injury or has malfunctioned and that the device or a similar device they manufacture could likely, be likely to cause or contribute to a death or a serious injury if the malfunction were to occur. If injuries or malfunctions occur with using a medical device, the FDA encourages healthcare professionals, consumers, and patients to submit voluntary reports through our MedWatch program. And I can provide links at the end of this conversation today. These medical device user reports are one of the post-market surveillance tools that the agency uses to monitor device performance in the field of use and may certainly detect potential safety-related issues and contribute to our analysis of the benefit-risk assessments of medical products. Next slide, please. Regarding this recall, FDA received 30 MDRs between 2011 and April 2021 that were identified through our analysis and were determined to be associated with polyester polyurethane foam breakdown. Of these reports, eight were from the US. And our analysis showed there were no reports of patient injury, associated death, among these 30 MDRs. Since after the recall became publicly known with a window between the end of April 2021 to April 30th, 2022, reports associated with polyester polyurethane foam breakdown or suspected foam breakdown has now reached 21,000 MDRs and 124 reports associated with a death. These MDRs that we received were both from mandatory reports from Philips and also voluntary reports from healthcare professionals, consumers, and patients. It is important to note here that MDRs are certainly a valuable source of information, but it is a passive surveillance system and therefore has limitations. These include underreporting of events, duplications and inaccuracies in the reports, and a lack of verification, as well as information that could be missing about the frequency and duration of the device use. Most importantly, medical device reports are rarely able to confirm a direct cause and effect between an adverse event and a specific medical device. Instead, we utilize the adverse reporting system to look at safety signals and then that we can more deeply investigate. And even with a comprehensive review of these reports, conclusions about the incidence, prevalence, or root cause of adverse events generally cannot be made from the reports alone. Next slide, please. So devices under this recall have a wide spectrum of treatment modalities, particular device settings and modes. These devices treat patients who need non-life support ventilation to full life support. Meaning, the underlying disease that a device is treating could vary from obstructive sleep apnea in spontaneously breathing patients where the CPAP therapy is splinting the upper airway open, to patients that have high-level quadriplegia where the patients would be completely dependent on their ventilator for respiratory support. Three examples here, I refer to the table below. At the top, we have CPAP and BiPAP devices that we would consider generally a low level of acuity. Meaning these devices are non-life supporting. These devices are used while sleeping to treat OSA and are chiefly used around eight hours a night. Due to the low level of acuity, these devices generally don't need any alarms or have backup power. Right below in the second row, we have non-life sustaining ventilators that operate with different assist modalities. These ventilator treatments have a broad spectrum of intended patients and could be used by patients that have obstructive pulmonary disease where the ventilator is prescribing for an assisted breathing for the patient's respiratory impairment. And this therapy could run upwards of 18 hours a day. And finally, there are life-supporting ventilators where the number of mandatory breaths per minute are preset and certain patients could be on the ventilator for as much as 24 hours a day. Thus, depending on the level of care the patient is getting for their condition, these devices have very different risk versus benefit profiles. Therefore, we continue to recommend that patients carefully consider and discuss with their healthcare providers how the recall might impact their care. Next slide, please. Thank you. Continued use of recalled devices requires careful considerations. And that is based on an individual patient's therapy requirements. Bearing this in mind, we believe it is extremely important to understand the benefit versus risk of continued use, which is highly dependent on the respiratory disorder that the device is treating. For some patients, stopping use of a recalled device may have even more risk than continued use of the device based on the risk associated with the treated respiratory disorder. As such, FDA continues to recommend that any change in course of care, change in therapy, or device should be carefully considered in consultation with the patient's healthcare provider. This is an important safety medication that is best tailored on an individual basis. Next slide, please. Regarding FDA's work on the recall, on March 10th, 2022, the FDA made a notification to Philips under what is known as 518A of the Federal Food Drug and Cosmetic Act. This requirement is a directive that the company notify patients and others of the recall of the unreasonable risk of substantial harm related to the degradation of the P E P U R foam. Part of the reason we did this is that we were still hearing from stakeholders about the gaps in communication of the recall leading to the agency to define that the notifications to date have been inadequate. We received a large number of calls from patients and consumers reporting concerns about the recalled products, specifically that they specifically that they were unaware that the details of the recall had not been, and had not been informed of the health risks presented by the recalled products. FDA has also received calls from patients and consumers who reported having heard of the recall sources from other than the manufacturer. Since the initiation of the recall, the FDA has engaged with Philips on several fronts about the effectiveness of the communications with public regarding the recall and the risks presented by the recalled products, and expressed concern that it is likely a significant portion of patients, consumers using the recalled products were unaware of the health risks associated with the products. Additionally, our feedback to Philips was that they provide healthcare providers and patients with access to all available information regarding the third-party testings that they were doing and conclusions. And they would share this findings with, about the testing of the polyester polyurethane foam, which includes informations about VOCs and particulates and other studies. And regarding prioritization, FDA recommended a prioritization scheme regarding replacement devices on March 14th, 2022, recommending that Philips provide a prioritization strategy for the replacement of devices to ensure that patients who are most vulnerable to poor health outcomes with continued or ceasing use of the recalled devices receive replacement devices as quickly as possible. Next slide, please. On May 2nd, 2022, the FDA issued a proposal to issue an order for the device repair, replacement, or refund. This notice was sent to Philips proposing an order should be issued under what is known as 518B of the Federal Food Drug and Cosmetic Act that would require Philips to submit a plan to replace, refund the purchase price of the recalled devices that were manufactured after November 2015. And finally, FDA has had inspections of the manufacturing facilities in Marysville, Pennsylvania at the end of 2021, and these inspectional observations were shared with Philips and posted to the FDA website. This is an ongoing process where the agency is carefully evaluating the findings of inspections and responses to the observations in their totality based on information available, and the agency will take, determine appropriate next steps as the review continues. Next slide, please. And here are some useful links that you could be provided with up-to-date information from the agency regarding our safety communications and FAQs regarding the recall, and below a link to our voluntary reporting system known as MedWatch where individuals, institutions can submit reports of adverse events, where we welcome input from healthcare providers and patients. And that concludes my talk, and thank you for your time today.
Merci, James, pour cette présentation.
Thank you, James, for your very clear presentation. I have a first question for you. This morning during our hearings, we heard a lot about adverse effects, especially respiratory effects were expected for such Philips medical devices. So we are now wondering about the carcinogenic risk. This was announced by Philips in June 2021 as a potential risk. At the level of the FDA, have you been working on a potential relationship between Philips medical devices and the occurrence of cancers? Are there ongoing studies at your level or at any other levels in the United States?
Dr. Thomas, I think there was some delay in the question, but if I understood your question correctly, what is the FDA doing regarding surveillance of cancer in patients using these devices?
Yes.
Certainly, you know, it goes with, if I could reiterate, the agency is very concerned regarding the risks regarding the continued use of the devices. And certainly, FDA is looking at the tests that are coming out of the devices with the polyester polyurethane foam. I saw a little bit of the slides presented from Philips this morning where they are disclosing the testing that's ongoing. Part of the issue is that our MDR system, as stated before, is a passive surveillance system. We are seeing incidents where people are complaining of ailments that we have associated with risks of the device, and certainly, this is going to be an ongoing process. And certainly also, I would say that regarding final conclusions, this is something that we would have to look from a, both a chemical characterization of the device and the known toxicological risks from being exposed from these devices. One of the things that is challenging is understanding the dose that potentially that could be, a patient could be exposed to. And that's something that we are also would be interested in calculating what the overall toxicological risk was for the population in general and what information would be needed to make conclusionary information available. Thank you.
Thank you. So, une autre question peut-être?
Any other questions? Will it be possible to have access to the results of your inspection in Pennsylvania in the manufacturing facility? Have you heard the question? Is it possible to get the outcome of the inspection that the FDA carried out on Philips manufacturing ground?
And certainly, as more information becomes available, the agency may make further statements regarding the results of the inspections and the interactions. But I do apologize, I can't comment right now if the reports will become public. But certainly, I think, if you've seen our communications, we're trying to be as communicative as possible where appropriate, and certainly, the inspectional results and the findings could make its way to our safety communications, but that is pending. That review is pending.
Monsieur Mazars.
Oui, bonjour.
Monsieur Mazars. Good afternoon. I have two questions regarding the replacement strategy. If I understood correctly, the two main measures are a request from the FDA to Philips to prioritize replacing some of the devices depending on the population in March, and then another request from you in May, asking Philips to submit a replacement plan. So it sounds recent, so my question is the following. Have you taken stock of the replacement situation of Philips medical devices in the United States? So that is my first question. And are there devices that remain on the market? Or how many devices have been withdrawn from the market?
So regarding exact numbers, I would refer you to Philips regarding the recall process and the remediation. You know, Philips is providing some of that information to the FDA, but they would have the most up-to-date number. But certainly, if you refer to both the orders under 518A regarding improvements in communications and 518B, you know, the agency is very much prioritizing and has deep concerns regarding the speed in which the recall is transitioning and concluding. This is also a challenging time where the agency also understands there are constraints. This is an extremely large recall, and processing it is a challenge. So, but the FDA, if you've seen our communications and the orders regarding 518 that you've seen, the FDA is, you know, trying to be as progressively moving the recall forward as expeditiously as possible. But we do understand and thus are making recommendations to our safety communications and being transparent about, you know, to users to speak to their healthcare provider regarding possible needing to use the device even while under recall while they're waiting for the replacement.
Just a brief remark. I'm asking you this question because we are not getting the figures from all the stakeholders. From Philips. I was just making a brief comment. Regarding the development of replacements in the United States, because every time we met with Philips, Philips refused to give us accurate figures. So we do not have any figures regarding the situation of replacements in the United States.
Thank you. You know, this is also, you know, one of the reasons why our communications and our directives under 518, we have concerns about the notifications and the information coming across. I will say that it's our understanding that when Philips does receive a registrant and they basically register and set up a recall remediation program with the individual, that that patient is getting information about how long they're going to have to wait. And that was something that we, that, you know, through the communications and 518, that we wanted, that we had requested. I would agree that, you know, the recall is extremely large. It is taking time. It's taking longer than I think the FDA would like. And so we're trying to move the ball forward through our communications, providing informations to patients that is useful, and also being, using our regulatory instruments as appropriate to move the recall as expeditiously as possible.
Mrs. Yakubie, your question? Good afternoon. I have a question regarding replaced devices. Have you got information on those devices? Because I thought I understood that they were identically replaced. So do you have more information regarding these new devices and the polyurethane foam used in those new devices?
The new devices don't have polyester polyurethane. They're a different sound abatement foam and silicone. And the devices that were, that the agency concurred on the rework process for had silicone in them. And I would also say that it is possible that a patient would be getting a slightly different model. As you, if you look at the recall, the devices under the recall span a very large time window. And in the US, patients generally don't have devices longer than five years. However, if a patient is using a device that the Philips does not make, the replacement device would be a model under the rework, which could be newer or different. So that is a concern that we would have to make sure that the prescription, that the settings, that all that would be equivalent and under the guise of medical supervision. In the US, these devices are prescription-only, and most of all patients that get CPAPs or ventilators get them through what we know as a DME, or durable medical equipment. And this is a middleman between the patient and the manufacturer. They fulfilled the prescription, they put up the settings. And so, you know, there is a process to safeguard to make sure that patients are getting equivalent treatment. But most importantly, this is done under prescription use, so medical supervision is required. A learned intermediary is necessary, and thus we consider these prescription devices.
I have one last question for you. I wanted to turn to the discussion we've had this morning with Philips. I think you listened to those. We discussed the methodology and the identified compounds. And what came out of this discussion was a doubt on how compounds are identified, especially the volatile compounds released by those devices for mythological reasons. So I wanted to ask you whether or not you had been focusing on that. Are you thinking this through? And what do you think about this?
I did see some of the slides that Philips presented. I would caveat that I didn't, I wasn't able to see the entire presentation in totality. But I would say that the FDA is engaged with Philips on many fronts regarding the third-party testing as well. We are providing feedback to them regarding testing where we're seeing things that the agency would like addressed. I would also say that, you know, the, some of the testing that you might have seen, some of the testing that, and certainly the testing that Philips disclosed, I would refer you to their report from, I believe, April 25th, 2022. And so that picture that, from those reports, you know, there's a lot of ongoing activity that's still going. And generally speaking, not just about this recall, but about FDA's determinations of gas quality, biocompatibility. As I referred to before, we use many different standards to basically have an independent view of a biocompatibility of what we call the gas pathway for all ventilators. And, you know, this is under the ISO-recognized standards. They're internationally used. They're a family of standards called 80601. And, you know, the standards that we use, the 18562 standards for biocompatibility really are quite probing. And certainly, when these standards are used, you may see compounds or chemicals of concern that are out of scope. Really important here is that a toxicological risk assessment is done and that the risk assessment is, has fidelity to the intended use and the duration of use that a patient could be using the device. And certainly, if there's testing that's coming up where further testing, and this would be kind of material-level testing, would be appropriate, these standards do call that out. So, you know, finding something, a compound of concern, you would need to possibly then do studies like chemical characterization, full chemical characterization. And Philips disclosed in their April 25th that they're doing a wide variety of tests on, you know, fresh foam, devices that have been aged through a process, and also through devices that they collect from the field. So we're hoping that as we get this information and Philips continues to update their website, that a clearer picture can be formed. But certainly, you know, toxicological risk assessment would be a very, very important, you know, data point and information to provide a full-faith risk assessment of these devices that are violative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have any more questions for you. I would like to extend my warm thanks for coming here. It was highly important and highly interesting to us, and I wish you a very pleasant day. Thank you. Let's now turn to our next hearing. I would like to welcome Dr. Tatyana Kanzaska from the Department of Medicine at the University of Ottawa. Dr. Kanzaska is part of a team that carried out a study on a cohort of patients at the Ottawa Hospital in Canada. Welcome. Thank you for being with us today and for being heard. I'll let you introduce yourself, and then you can please give a... I'll let you introduce yourself and then you can please give us your presentation. We will be moving this slide for you.
Hi, thank you so much for inviting me. I'm Titiana Kanzerska and I'm Associate Professor at the University of Ottawa and the Ottawa Hospital Research Institute. And today I will be presenting the results of our study. Okay, so I will be talking about a secondary data analysis on association between positive airway pressure device manufacturer and incident cancer. And this study was published as a research letter as the American Journal of Respiratory and Critical Care Medicine in December 15, 2021. And I also want to acknowledge other co-investigators of this study, doctors Richard Leong, Mark Bullis, Daniel Mackaysick, Brian Murray, Gregory Bryson, Robert Talarica, Atul Malhotra, Andrea Gershon, Constant McKenzie, and Marcus Pollitt. Can I have a next slide, please? I don't have any conflict of interest to disclose, but it's important to know that this study was supported by ICES, the Lung Health Foundation, American Thoracic Society Foundation, CHEST Foundation, Ottawa Hospital Sleepwalk, the University of Ottawa Department of Medicine. Part of these materials are based on data and information compiled and provided by the Canadian Institute for Health Information and Cancer Care Ontario. And my research time was protected by the PSI Foundation. Next slide. As we all know, Philips Respironics issued a voluntary recall notification for PAP devices and ventilators on June 14, 2021, potentially affecting millions of people. The voluntary recall pertained to two issues related to the sound abatement foam used in some models manufactured since 2009. First, the foam might degrade into irritant particles that could enter the device air pathway and to be ingested or inhaled by a PAP users. And the second form may release volatile organic compounds or VOC that a PAP user may inhale. The potential health risks reported on Philips Respironics website include headaches, irritation, inflammation, respiratory issues, hypersensitivity, noisy vomiting, and importantly, possible toxic and cancerogenic effect. Next slide. So the research objective of this study was to assess the relationship between the manufacturer of PAP therapy devices and incident cancer. And we hypothesized that Philips Respironics PAP devices would be associated with a higher incidence of cancer. Next slide. We conducted this study utilizing previously described retrospective longitudinal multicenter clinical cohort study, which used data linked a clinical and provincial health administrative data, including adults who underwent a diagnostic polysomnogram, a diagnostic sleep study between 1994 and 2017 in four academic hospitals in Ontario. And those individuals were free of cancer at baseline. We followed those individuals from the time of the sleep study until cancer diagnosis moving out of the province death on March 31, 2020. And as a primary outcome, we considered incident cancer any type derived from the Ontario Cancer Registry. Information on positive airway pressure therapy devices was derived from the assistive device program database. And given data availability, we focused only on individuals who claimed a purchase of the devices since 2012. Next slide, please. Using ADP database, we classified individuals by the manufacturer of PAP device they claimed, specifically Philips Respironics, ResMed, Fisher &amp; Packle. And we looked separately for the ResMed and Fisher &amp; Packle because on that time on their website, they claimed that their devices are not affected by the recall and they use a different material. We also identify those on other devices or not reported, and we combine all non-Filips Respironics devices. As an analytic approach, we used multivariable Cox cost specific regressions. And in our model, we consider the following variables: age, sex, alcohol use disorder, chronic heart failure, COPD, hypertension, diabetes, obstructive sleep apnoea as derived from a diagnostic sleep study, and importantly, PAP treatment initiation, which was considered as a time varied covariant, which means that a person was considered to be exposed to the device and consequently to be exposed to foam since the date of the CPAP claim. And we also included, we also controlled in our statistical model for sleep clinic sites, given that we have included four sites and year of the sleep study. Next slide. So we included in our study about 7,000 individuals who claimed a purchase of a PAP device through the ADP database since 2012, 51 years old, 64% men, and 41% of individuals with severe obstructive sleep apnoea. And as you can see on this slide, majority of individuals claimed ResMed devices, 57%, 22% claimed Fisher &amp; Packle devices, and 18% claimed Philips and Respironics devices, with about 19% of devices being recalled. And we derived this information about specific recall devices on Philips Respironics website. So information provided on that time. We did not find considerable differences in baseline characteristics between groups. Next slide. Our immediate follow-up of about 7.5 years, 5% of individuals developed cancer. The most frequent cancer subtypes were prostate, breast cancer, colorectal, melanoma, and lung cancer. And when we compared different groups, individuals who claimed Philips Respironics and other devices, the standardized difference did not exceed 6% for cancer subtypes of interest. And specifically for lung cancer, the standardized difference was zero with the same percentage of individuals who developed lung cancer in follow-up. Next slide. As you can see on the, on the left of this slide, on this plot, we did not find a difference in crude incidence rate of cancer between individuals who claimed Philips Respironics and other devices. And on the right of this slide, you can see that even adjusting for confounders, we did not find an increased hazard of incident cancer associated with Philips Respironics devices. Thank you. Next slide. However, our results needed to be interpreted with keeping following limitations in mind. Our study was limited by secondary data analysis, the potential for misclassification bias and unmeasured confounding. We also have a relatively limited sample size, which prevented us from doing analysis by separate cancer subtypes and exploring more potential baseline differences by PAP manufacturer. Also, we have no information on adherence with positive airway pressure therapy, but we conducted a sensitivity analysis to show the robustness of our funding. And also, the median 7.5 years of follow-up may be not sufficient for all cancer subtypes. Our sample size and follow-up time were in combination, still large enough to detect a hazard ratio of 1.15, so to show 15% increase hazard of incident cancer. However, again, all these estimation sample size calculations are limited by post hoc nature of this analysis. Next slide. To conclude, we did not find a higher risk of incident cancer among those who claimed the device from Philips Respironics as compared to other manufacturers. And despite the study limitations I just mentioned, I hope that this study still provides some reassurance and it should help balance clinical risk benefit discussions and prevent discontinuation of therapy, especially in situations when subsequent direct harm could occur from untreated severe sleep apnoea or symptomatic sleep apnoea, such as impairment in alertness leading to traffic accidents. And we need more studies, including a larger number of exposed individuals and longer follow-up to conform funding from our study and also to be able to look on the relationship between different cancer subtypes and affected Philips Respironics devices. Thank you so much for your attention. And I will be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Est-ce que on a des, des questions?
Are there any questions?
Madame Fournier.
Mrs. Fournier? Thank you for your presentation. I have several questions regarding your study design. Let me know if I'm wrong, but you started the follow-up when you made the diagnosis of sleep apnea?
The date of the diagnostic sleep study. Diagnostic sleep study was the index date.
Donc, il y a un délai de plusieurs années en moyenne?
There is a delay of several years between the time the diagnosis is made and the time the device is being used. So how do you take into account cancers occurring during that time if they haven't started using a device?
So the patient was considered to be exposed to the device only from the date of the claim. So this is why when looking on association between manufacturers and cancer, we only take into account those cancers that happened after.
Dans les courbes d'incidence cumulées...
In the cumulative incidence curves, we have a follow-up that can go up to 21 or 22 years, if I'm not mistaken. But if the follow-up starts in 2012, the first time they use the device, this doesn't sound possible. But in those incidence curves, in those incidence curves, not in the Cox analysis, I feel like the follow-up starts at the diagnosis and not at the time when they start using the device. Is that the case?
So this is correct. The follow-up start at the diagnosis of the sleep study. But treatment for positive airway pressure therapy was included in a statistical model as a time-dependent covariant, which means that exposure to treatment started at the time of the claim. So before the claim, individuals were considered as not exposed. And after the claim, individuals were considered as exposed.
Oui, je comprends tout à fait. Donc les analyses de Cox...
Yes, I understand. So the Cox analyses are correct, but the graphs cannot be interpreted because they take into account a period when people were not exposed.
Correct.
D'accord. Est-ce que vous avez envisagé de faire des analyses en...
Have you contemplated the idea of carrying out analysis between the time when they start using the device and the occurrence of problems? So in theory, there shouldn't be an increased risk, but there might be associations with longer-term therapy.
So we, I didn't catch the entire question, but we calculated the hazard, not the risk during the first year only. So we take in account where all time available and we calculated a hazard ratio. So a hazard associated with being exposed to Philips Respironics as in comparison to other devices.
Did you consider conducting the analysis separately according to the duration since the start of the, of exposure? Because maybe your result is overall on the, on the overall period after, after the start of exposure and maybe there's a difference according to the, the delay since exposure.
So this is a good question and this is a type of the studies that it's very difficult to design. So why we made a decision to follow individuals from the date of the diagnostic sleep study, not from the date of a claim? But thank you, because we are currently still doing similar studies and we will do more analysis. Because as you know, we previously found that untreated sleep apnea can be associated with cancer. So for us, it was also important to consider that patient diagnosed with sleep apnea at this specific time and also to consider an immortal severity of sleep apnea. Because in some way, we need to adjust for the fact that if we are not treating severe sleep apnea, it also can cause cancer. So this is why we designed this study in this way. But I agree, we have a lot of limitations and we're still trying to think about better study design to look specifically on Philips Respironics devices in cancer. Because we need a longer time, longer follow-up time.
Maybe another, an additional point related. Do you have a lot of patients who started with the machine and then stopped and changed machines? And did you account for, for that?
In Canada, we have a coverage for the devices for every five years. So most of the device is used for five years or more. And so we have not included in the analysis when device was changed, but it was very small numbers. But again, we have no information on CPAP adherence. We just assume that CPAP adherence should be different between PAP manufacturers.
Okay, so I think we do not have any other questions. So thank you very much, doctor. It was very nice to talk with you and to have a presentation of your studies.
Thank you for having me.
Bye-bye. Have a nice day. Nous arrivons à la dernière audition.
Let's now turn to our last hearing for the day. Welcome, Professor Ludger Grothe. I'm sorry if I butchered your name. You are part of the Sleep Disorder Center and the pulmonary department at the Gothenburg Hospital in Sweden. You represent a team that also undertook a study on those medical devices. You now have the floor. Please introduce yourself and then give us your presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for inviting me. My name is Ludger Grothe, probably not that easy to, to express. And I'm a medical director at the Sleep Center at our university hospital in Gothenburg. And I'm also an associate professor at the University of Gothenburg. And I'm going to present a study which we performed in collaboration with my colleagues Andreas Palm and Mirjam Junggren from Uppsala University in Sweden and Magnus Ekström from Lund University in Sweden. So if I can present, and I'm sorry, I have an animated presentation, so I have to give the comments quite often to continue with the next presentation. to continue with the next presentation. So next slide please. So the aim of this study was to analyze outcomes of patients using the Philips devices in comparison to other CPAP devices in Sweden. And we were particularly interested to look on the use of anti-obstructive medication as a proxy or as a method to assess airway obstruction in those patients with asthma or COPD. We looked on hospitalization, on mortality rates and cancer incidence. The next slide please. We have two national registries to monitor sleep apnea care in Sweden. One is called the Sweetbox Registry, which also looks on long term oxygen therapy and respiratory failure as well as home mechanical ventilation. But they have also a CPAP arm for obstructive sleep apnea. And then we have the other registry, which is the CSAR, the Swedish Sleep Apnea Registry, where we report together data on CPAP treatment. You see here the map from Sweden and we have these different centers providing CPAP treatment in our country. And probably the most interesting one is where we have the white dots, which means where they have no data. But you see, the majority of centers are reporting to our registries. And both registries started around 2010, where we have the baseline data from the sleep apnea evaluation. In Sweden, it's almost polygraphy data. And we have probably eighty-five percent of patients starting CPAP in Sweden. And as you see, it started in 2010. It took a couple of years before we got full coverage. And then we have treatment follow up data and all these data are reported manually by physicians or by nurses at these sleep centers. Next slide please. For the purpose to do the retrospective analysis for the Philips devices, we looked on the discovery cohort. Next please. Where we looked specifically on the CPAP patient, sixty, more than sixty-five thousand patients. And then next, we looked on the, we get outcome data from the Swedish Cancer Registry. Next, from the Swedish Cause of Death Registry. Next, the Swedish National Patient Registry. Next, and the Swedish Prescription Drug Registry. So we really combined the sleep apnea data with highly established databases in Sweden, which are national. The next slide. Here a short report about data quality and validity of these important outcome data which we analyzed. All those data are seen by the national administered and supervised by the National Board of Health and Welfare. They include all Swedish citizens. And the Cancer Registry, it's mandatory. It's since nineteen fifty-six and regarded as highly reliable. The same is with the patient, National Patient Registry, which was founded in nineteen sixty and includes diagnosis and procedures in hospitals and performed by specialists. And again, it's since nineteen eighty mandatory to report to this registry. And finally, the National Prescribed Drug Registry, it's used in all pharmacies in Sweden and it's an automated process, which means all medication handed out to the patient is registered there. So we cannot monitor if the medication is actually used, but we can monitor that it's handed out over the counter to a certain person. Next slide please. And then our sleep apnea data, as I said you, they are reported manually. And here we performed a validation study looking on, for instance, the date of start or the APNAPOPNIR index or the BMI. So core data. We did a study to see how well our data in the registry corresponds to the data in the medical journals. And you see that the mean differences is almost zero for these variables. And then we have certain cutoffs for what we could say important differences. And here we have between one and four percent of the data, which are not exactly. So altogether, I would say, even if the data are reported manually on the sleep apnea data, we have quite good coverage. Next slide please. Now I want to present our collaborative work, which we started immediately after summer two thousand and twenty-one, when we were confronted with a safety report together with my colleagues, which I mentioned before. And we published this recently as a research letter in the European Respiratory Journal. Next slide. Here you see the flow chart. Next. We started from over sixty-five thousand patients and we sent out questionnaires to thirty-nine of these sleep centers and asked on an annual basis on the distribution of Philips devices or other brands for CPAP devices, which is mainly resmet devices. And here we had to exclude sixteen thousand patients. Next. Where we could not really identify a clear cutoff of almost all patients in a certain center receiving Philips or another one. But we finally had a very nice distribution. And the next please, where you can see more than eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-one patients having Philips devices and almost thirty thousand individuals not having Philips devices when they started CPAP treatment. So this is really based on the local tenders and it's not based on patient characteristics. Here again, the Swedish map. You see the deep blue are the Philips counties and the light blue are the non Philips counties and the white ones respect those where we could not find a clear distribution during the observation time. Next slide please. So our statistical analysis we performed, we had the null hypothesis. Because from start, we thought the healthcare system has not really observed certain increases of airway obstruction or lung cancer. So we thought that this probably is, that we will find no adverse health effects with the use of the Philips devices. We studied the use of anti-obstructive medication from the Prescribed Drug Registry. We looked on the incidence of all cancers, in particular on lung cancers, with data from the Cancer Registry. We looked on hospitalization incidence and mortality rates. And these are from start of CPAP treatment with a Philips device or a non Philips device until the date of, it was the last of March two thousand and eighteen, when we stopped the observation period. And the analysis plan, we performed first an unadjusted group comparison. And then what we think is the strongest data, we did a propensity score matching for each individual who had a Philips device. We identified another sleep apnea patient with a non Philips device and we matched for age, sex, BMI, AHI, heart failure, ischemic heart disease and observation time. So we call it a pseudo randomization. We also applied logistic regression analysis adjusted for these factors and the centers were also clustered for county. Then we also performed a sensitivity analysis when we looked on smoking rates in the different counties. We unfortunately had not smoking yes, no or smoking status for each individual. So we tried to assess for county. And we also did a sensitivity analysis looking on PAP compliance. We had PAP compliance data, CPAP compliance data, reported those not from telemedicine for approximately thirteen, fourteen thousand of all our sixty-five thousand individuals. Next please. Here you see now the main result table and I will guide you through. Next please. When we looked in the unadjusted analysis, we looked on the prescription of SABRA. SABRA means short acting beta agonist. These are really those used when you get an worsening of the respiratory situation. And as you can see, between non, also PUF PAP means respiratory device and non PUF PAP means non respiratory devices. You have a slight increase in the first year use of SABRA medication, but even a significant increase during the entire more than any time. A slight increase in the percentage of use of SABRA. And OCS means oral corticosteroids. You also see an increase significantly, some person increase in the use of oral corticosteroids in the first year or at any year in the unadjusted model. And we go to the next please. You see in the propensity score matching, we have again the significant increase of use of both short acting beta agonists and the oral corticosteroids as a proxy, as a sign for potential airway exacerbation, upper airway obstruction, lower airway obstruction and exacerbation of asthma or COPD. When we then looked into those, the next please, in the subgroup of patients who had already a diagnosis of obstructive lung disease, which means asthma or COPD, you see the intake numbers of those drugs is much higher. But again, the Philips devices had significantly higher numbers, both in the unadjusted and in the propensity score adjusted analysis, which we interpret as a sign of a potential increase in airway obstruction by the use of Philips devices. Next slide please. When we then look on incidence of all cancer types, or in particular for lung cancer, we also found both in the unadjusted and in the adjusted model, significant higher proportion of individuals having cancer incidence, which means from start of CPAP treatment until the end of observation period two thousand and eighteen. And the mean, you know, we have altogether an observation time of almost one hundred forty thousand patient years in our study. But the mean observation time is quite short. It's two point four and two point six years in both groups. But the entire amount of numbers is very high. And if we then look on patients with non obstructive lung disease, we do not find an increase in cancer incidence in those who already have the diagnosis of obstructive lung disease. The next slide please. Yes, here, this is unpublished data. When we looked also on multivariate logistic and Cox regression analysis, next, we can confirm that we have an increase of risk for use of SABRA within the first year. Next. Within any time or oral corticosteroid use is also increased. Next. We find again lung cancer was increased. And next, we do not find an increase in hospitalization. Next, or in mortality. So we then performed also sensitivity analysis looking for compliance data in this very small group. But particularly, as we did not have smoking on each individual, we adjusted or we just removed one county in southern Sweden called Skorne, which has a slightly higher prevalence of smoking compared to our other counties in Sweden. And this reduced material, and in this county, a lot of Philips machines are prescribed. So we could not identify an increased lung cancer risk anymore when we did this sensitivity analysis. Next please. So what are the strengths? Next. We have a large cohort. We have a selection of treatment devices based on regional tenders, not on patient characteristics, which can be recognized as a pseudo randomization. We have a very high data quality with regard to the outcomes. But also OSA diagnoses and PAP treatments start. On the other hand, of course, there's limitations. Like my previous speaker said, and all the studies now published in from the French Loire cohort. These are retrospective analysis. There will be no prospective trial anyhow. So the allocation to treatment device was not on the level of each patient. So we had to ask the centers, which is clearly a limitation. We have incomplete capture of confounders for obstructive pulmonary disease and cancer, in particular smoking status or lifestyle or occupational and environmental exposure. And then specifically for the cancer question, for lung cancer question, we have a far for short observation time. But we decided to report of course our data. So next please, in conclusion. Next. First of all, we have a pattern of actual drug dispense at Swedish pharmacies suggesting a mild increase of airway obstruction in the Philips device group. Next please. We have uncertainty related to a potential modified cancer risk. Really, what's wrong is that we are quite unsecure. We have no, next please. We have no increase in adverse outcomes, including hospitalization or mortality. Next. And of course, the practical question. Yeah, devices should be exchanged as fast as possible. And the next slide. Of course, these data also created substantial interest at Swedish media. And here you see Andreas Palm, who was the person who actively performed the mathematical analyses and statistics. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Est-ce qu'on a des questions du coup?
Do we have questions?
Allez-y, Madame Fournier.
Mrs. Fournier. I have a few remarks. I was underlining the main limitation for the cancer incidence and that is the short length of the study, short duration. But that is not a problem for the exacerbation of respiratory problems. But there's also the issue of the difference in tobacco use in one of your counties for patients exposed to Philips devices. I could not have access to the reference you mentioned on tobacco use in this county because I don't think that the link is up to date and I feel like it's written in Swedish. So I'm not even sure I would understand it, even if I could access it. And I had data on cancer incidence depending on the counties. And in this Skorne county, the cancer incidence is much higher than the average. So that is an issue to interpret the results.
Yes, we felt the same. In general, we must say Sweden is the county one of the lowest smoking rates probably in Europe. In men, it's far below ten percent and it's decreasing over time. In females, it's a little bit higher and rather probably has increased over a certain time. From the ranking in lung cancer, I would say, Skorne is probably third or fourth ranked in Sweden on cancer incidence. So that's, and it's clearly strong limitation of our data, both that we have so short observation time, but then also that we have no complete data, we have no data on smoking at all. But still, we have a very long observation time. It's short observation, but in a large number of individuals giving us more than one hundred forty thousand years of observation, patient years, which probably is interesting for the drug dispense data. But for lung cancer, we are fully aware of this important limitation.
Encore une remarque, enfin une question pour le coup. Donc vous.
One question. You underline how difficult it is to interpret results for cancer because of this difference in tobacco use in one of your counties. Do you think this limitation affects your results in the same way as for respiratory disorders?
That we even performed the analysis without Skorne and then the data were still significant. So, and one must say. So, and one must say, it's not the case that in Skåne, people are smoking very, very much and the rest of Sweden, they don't smoke so much. It's a relative. And this was our attempt to adjust for our uncertainty about smoking exposure at all. But we have to keep in mind that the distribution of the devices is not, has not been performed on basis of any patient data or smoking state, et cetera. It's really the local tenders deciding what devices were before or were used or not. So it's really not patient related.
It would be interesting to find out which counties are part of which groups, exposed or non-exposed, to know which counties you are comparing. And if systematically or randomly, the counties using Philips devices do not have higher cancer incidence than other counties. It would be interesting to know which counties are included in which group.
We have this figure, which I presented also in my presentation, where you see these are two counties in the south. One is south of Stockholm, more east coast. And then we have in Norrbuten, which is in the upper north. So there you have some areas with large city like Malmö, it's in Skåne. And then you have also areas with a lot of rural communities up in the north. So it's really diverse, I would say. And we have statistical data on the mean smoking rate in those counties. And we try to adjust for that. And we just picked out Skåne because we were, like I said, we had the null hypothesis in the beginning and we were really surprised about the findings and we really desperately tried to adjust for factors to explain why this. But then we decided to, we also publish the data like they are.
Madame Drispira?
Maybe just?
Mrs. Drispira?
We know that in your country and also in other Nordic countries, you have very, very a lot of numbers of, a large number of registries with a lot of information on your populations. Do you, do you know if there are some of these registries for which you, there is information on this kind of device at the individual level and if some analysis are considered?
Devices on the individual level are probably from 2019 onwards and even accelerated to then when using telemedicine. And then we would really have the possibility to capture those data, but they're still not in registries. So the data which we have from registries are more regarded to the hard outcomes like mortality or hospitalization, cancer or diagnosis of ischemic heart disease or heart failure. Then we have specific quality registries for certain diagnoses like stroke, heart failure, ischemic heart disease, diabetes, and in those, or airway diseases like COPD and asthma. And in those registries, we have very detailed data on smoking status or even some lab values could be there from laboratory blood chemistry, for instance. Like I showed you in this diagram of the Discovery Study, it is linked to several other of these quality registries, but then we will miss out, we need patients with overlap of OSA and a specific comorbidity like diabetes or COPD. Then one could dive into more details about the phenotypes of the patients or the probably the behavior.
Okay, thank you so much.
Very much.
Yeah, your part, yeah, your participation was very valuable and it was nice to talk with you. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much. Highly interesting hearing. Thank you very much.
Bye, have a nice day.
Yeah, same.
This was the last hearing for this temporary scientific committee on Philips ventilation medical devices affected by the June 2021 recall. We are now putting an end to the live live transmission of this committee and our recommendations will be made public in the next few weeks. Have a good day.